Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen Planning Commission Meeting. I'd like to remind everybody, please turn your cellphones to off or silent. And if anybody needs a listening device, please check with staff. I'm sure they'll be more than happy to help you out. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Chester.
Here.
Pennington.
Here.
Montal.
Here.
Kurt.
Here.
Winston.
Here.
Bunt.
Here.
Noble.
Here.
Audrey.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Okay, we have several items on consent. I'd kind of, I'd like to just let everybody know, any member of the public that's here to speak to a specific item. I'm gonna read through the six items, and if you hear it, we'll take public comment after all the, after all the items have been read. Just so everybody knows kind of what the order is. Oh, I guess approval of the minutes. And one, approval of the September twenty-third.
Sure, I'll move to approve the minutes.
Sorry. Mr. Garner, am I doing that?
Well, you usually go through the entire contraption.
That's it, okay. Okay, item one, I apologize. I'm a little rushed.
To clarify for the audience, the consent agenda will be approved as read unless somebody objects and wants to hear one of those items. So if you can't speak in favor of one of the consent agenda items, you don't need to speak.
Well, I'm used to having an item on consent. Okay, let's see. Item number two on consent is a vacation thirteen dash forty-four ninety-one for twenty-three nineteen North Marks Mill. Item three is vacation thirteen dash forty-four ninety-three for four ninety-one East Fairway Lane, Jarrett. Item four is vacation thirteen dash forty-five zero-one for East Jaster, Kenny. Item five is vacation thirteen dash forty-five zero-three for five sixteen and five eighteen Southeastern Avenue for the University of Arkansas. And item six is administrative item thirteen dash forty-five twenty-five on the corner of West Watson Street and North St. Charles Avenue. Okay, I apologize yet. If there's any member from the public to speak to any of these items.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Second. Okay, I have motion from Commissioner Winston and a second from Commissioner Chester. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Chester.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Montal.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Audrey.
Yes.
Hopkins. Motion carries.
Okay. First item of new business is an administrative item thirteen dash forty-four eighty-nine for six seventeen North College Avenue for Boucher Boutique. I think I'm saying that correctly.
Bistro.
Bistro, I apologize. I'm out of it tonight, I apologize. Mr. Thompson, can you give us the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The subject property is located at six seventeen North College. That's the Yacht Club that we're all familiar with. So far this year in two thousand and thirteen, three mobile vendors have received planning commission approval to operate for longer than the ninety-day mobile vendor permit period allows. As part of approval for these businesses to remain on-site and operating, the owner had agreed to donate approximately two thousand square feet of commercial property along College and Trenton Avenue. The applicant tonight is requesting a variance to continue operating this business, Boucher Bistro, on-site for one year from the date of original approval of their mobile vendor permit, which was October, excuse me, July twenty-sixth, two thousand and thirteen. Staff has found that this business is appropriate on-site, but is not adversely or unfairly compete with any other French bistro-style businesses in the area. As far as we know, there's nothing similar, similar menu or similar style operating. And we would, with conditions, would support and recommend approval of this variance tonight.
Okay, is the applicant available? If you could, come up and state your name and tell us about your project, please.
Good evening. My name is Vince Penalto. I'm one of the co-winners of the Boucher Bistro Truck here in Fayetteville. And we, I'm an old restaurateur here in town, and a lot of you have been familiar with, and I hope so gladly. But I'm also a teacher of culinary now, and what we've done is operated the truck at the Yacht Club with some of my former students who are now real young chefs. And so this has been a really nice opportunity for a little startup, little incubator for us to try to see, test the waters, so to speak, on how this is gonna operate. Yes, for me personally, I'm too old to be like in a truck all the time, but I would like to get us to a permanent location here in town, but I want the extension of our permit to continue business so that I can systematically and choose properly the location with the size and the location and whatnot. So I would hopefully you would, we try not to, we get along well with the neighbors. We don't really have anybody that does French-style food these days in Fayetteville for some reason. And so I'm hoping that you would see fit as to approve, so that we can just continue what we're doing. And I've got a, I do have some reports here of the taxes and stuff that we can pay, not, you know, nobody likes to pay them actually, but we do actually get them to the city and state and county when we do. And so I would be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. If we have any questions, we'll bring you back up.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public here to speak to this item? Seeing that, I'll bring you back to the commission.
Questions. So there's not any other similar restaurants, I mean, within half a mile about whatever?
I'm not aware of anything. I wasn't able, I wasn't able to find anything that.
I agree. Mr. Chair, no further comment, I can make a motion to approve ADN thirteen four forty-nine.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Hoskins and a second from Commissioner Chester. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Chester.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Montal.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Audrey.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Next item is a preliminary plat thirteen dash forty-four thirty-seven on the corner of North Oakland and Zion Road, Oak Creek Estates. Mr. Garner, please give us the staff report, please.
Yes, sir. This property is located at the eastern end of Skilling Road, it's east of Fayetteville. You can see here, this is aerial photo shows where Skilling Road connects into Oakland-Zion Road, and this is the wooded property just here to the east. Mission Boulevard is to the south here. And you have Mud Creek, which runs along this eastern property line through this wooded area. The applicant is proposing a preliminary plat to divide this into nine single-family lots. This is outside the city limits, it's not available for city sewers, so they would have to be getting separate permits for each lot. Along with this preliminary plat, there's a couple of variance requests and determinations for the planning commission to consider, one of them being a master street plan amendment. And I will pull up a diagram showing what they're proposing. This is a diagram showing the city's master street plan. You can see the red lines indicate principal arterial roadways, which are our largest roadways. You can see here, this was our version a couple of years ago, when we updated the master street plan with City Plan two thousand and thirty, shows Skilling Road extending all the way east as a principal arterial down to Mission Boulevard. And the applicant is proposing with their subdivision to remove Skilling Road from the master street plan, and instead, they do still propose to have local street connectivity. You can see here kind of this gray dashed line is where their proposed street would be, proposed to connect here to the southeast and provide eventual local street connection down back to Mission Boulevard. And we do recommend in favor of their request. We feel like in looking at this particular project and looking at this particular region between Oakland-Zion and Mission even closer, we feel like it, it, principal arterial connection is not necessary here in this area. We do have these two arterials that are in close proximity to one another, and so we feel like, you know, as far as traffic flow and traffic safety, we don't need another arterial connecting through this area, adequate to now Mission and up Oakland-Zion Road. In addition, there will also be local street connections hopefully, once this whole area builds out. And so we're recommending that that particular item be forwarded to the city council with the recommendation for approval. And we have some other discussion in our staff report about just the, part of the fact that we're supportive of this is that a lot of these lots are already developed out here to the south and to the north, which are city, single-family homes, and so we really don't anticipate this area needing to pull a high volume of traffic for high density. So that's basis for our recommendation. One of the other variances for the commission to consider is the applicant's requesting a variance of block length, and this is within one mile of the city, so our street standards are also under review of the planning commission. That includes our block length. Their proposed street here is just basically one street that comes here, starts here, at this point ends in their southeast area of their site, it's about twelve hundred feet in length, and our maximum block length is eight hundred feet, and so they're in excess of that. So our codes would require them to have a street stubout to the north end of the south to break that up into a block. However, again, we looked at this setting out here in a rural area, we don't feel like it's appropriate to try to make this particular subdivision stubout to already developed properties where there are already homes here to the south and to the north. In addition, again, this is also based partially on the setting and the context of this area being pretty rural, we don't feel like the block length is as essential as it would be as you get closer into town where you need more routes in and out, more connections. One of the other, getting through the conditions of approval, well, here's the actual plat, you can see in detail the dimensions of the street. And the street design is proposed as a low-impact development street cross-section where it's not your typical pipe-in-pond stormwater technique, they're allowing water to flow over the street from the south to the north and to allow the sheet flow across these large estate lots over the grass and infiltrate into the soil as opposed to just shooting the water out as you would typically see into a detention pond. They do have some detention pond, which is necessary to account for some of their flows. But as part of this low-impact development street cross-section, they only have to do sidewalk on one side of the street, and we feel like it's appropriate, again, given this, the low volumes of traffic we're anticipating here, pedestrian and vehicles as well, and just kind of the sensitive environmental setting near this creek as well. One thing I did, I did print out a copy of a letter from the Arkansas Department of Environmental Health and pass it out to the commission, I just received that today. But they, they looked at the soil testings for the separate permits for this subdivision, and likely, according to that letter, this development will be, end up losing one or two lots on the north side of the streets because of the soils have not perked as originally anticipated. So I did want to bring that to the commission's attention. I do feel like the preliminary plat could still be approved, and I did have a condition already built into your conditions of approval that it'll have to comply with Arkansas Health Department requirements. So they're not potentially increasing densities, potentially just combining some lots to make them larger or maybe moving the lot line slightly. So I don't think that would impact our recommendation for the commission on any of the street improvements or any of the other issues that we're looking at here. But I did want to bring that to your attention. One of the other conditions of approval, the street improvements, we are recommending they improve their street frontage, street plan standard. In this case, Oakland-Zion Road is a principal arterial, we're, we're not recommending the full widening as to an arterial standard, though we are recommending they do place sidewalk at the master street plan right-of-way. We're also recommending that as part of the street improvements, they pay an assessment for the ultimate stubout of this street here to the southeast, and that would include removing this temporary cul-de-sac. Those are the primary issues I wanted to bring up, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. Is the applicant available? Could state your name and tell us about your project, please.
I'm Melvin Milhalla, Milhalla Engineering. And it's been a while since I've been here. Economy kind of slows down. But as Andrew already pointed out, we tried to put together a real nice feature in the east, northeast part of town that would add, enhance to the, to the community. It can be some nice lots, nice homes. Presently, the area is about ninety percent timber, and we're hoping to keep as much of that as possible. Of course, the house builder will put his house where he wants it in driveway, and that's gonna knock out some detention pond they got some, but we hope to keep quite a bit of that. We do respect the request here approving this subdivision with the comments that city planners mentioned. I would say that the Health Department letter, I got a copy of it late today, too, does not mention in here that the soil is bad, just mentions setbacks from Mud Creek, which is very, very small, digged, you might say. And we already put twenty-five feet on each side to protect that as a preservation of the trees along that creek in the beginning. And then there's a, we know we'll have to work with them to work out, may have to set the things up front of the lot rather than in the back. We understand how to do that, work with them, we'll give them information and talk with them. We just appreciate your consideration there. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, thank you. If we have any questions, we'll bring you back up. Is there any member from the public to speak to this item? Seeing that, I'll bring you back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
This seems fairly straightforward. Thanks, Mr. Garner, for thoroughly going through all of it. I understand the city staff's reasons for thinking that adjustments can be made to the master street plan in this area, I think they're reasonable. And given that, I'm gonna move that we, sorry, is this approved or forward?
It's approved. The one item on the master street plan would have to be forwarded.
I'm gonna move that we approve PPL thirteen dash four-four-three-seven, finding in favor of items one through three, and otherwise finding, otherwise approving of staff's conditions of approval, and I guess moving to forward item one then, master street plan?
Recommending the change.
Recommending, recommending the change staff illustrates to the city council.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Question for staff. Andrew, your recommendation to the city council as far as Skilling Road or whatever, you were talking about removing that completely from the master street plan or just downgrading it?
We only show on the master street plan collectors and arterials typically, so it would essentially be removing this. That would not be removing the requirement for connectivity, you know, we're, this, but, you know, we are, it would be technically removing this, and we don't feel like it's really appropriate either to require a street widened along their southern property line here at this point.
Okay, and so, so therefore, as far as tapping this cul, this temporary cul-de-sac into that street later, it's really not a problem or what have you, as far as the way, the angle of the street meets the eventual Skilling Road, because it won't be there anymore.
Right, yeah. I don't think it's gonna be a problem.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Chester and a second from Commissioner Pennington. Or Winston, I apologize.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question for staff. This is something I thought about after subdivision committee, but if the street is eventually connected to Mission, would there be any change in the one-sided sidewalk at that point? I mean, would it still be, you know, if this developer was connecting all in Mission in this project and not doing half now and expecting half later, would the requirement be for sidewalk on one side of the street or would it be both?
We would just have to look at that. I mean, I think for this particular piece of property, it made sense to do the low-impact development street cross-section where you do sidewalk on one side, it's also a storm drainage issue. You know, our typical streets do require sidewalks on both sides, so in, you know, I, I can't really answer exactly how that would go, how the sidewalk would transition at this point. We would just have to evaluate that, I think, when the next development ties into that street.
Okay.
The right-of-way would be there, I mean, it's a sixty-foot right-of-way they're dedicating. You know, I wouldn't anticipate going back in and requiring a developer to build enough sidewalks on both sides of this neighborhood because of the whole storm drainage issue.
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Chester and a second from Commissioner Winston. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Chester.
Yes.
Pennington.
Yes.
Montal.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Winston.
Yes.
Bunt.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Audrey.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item we have up is a conditional use permit thirteen dash forty-four ninety-nine for four thousand eighty-one, Doris Crossover Road, Naples, one thirty-eight. Let's see, Mr. Garner, can you give us the staff report, please?
Sure. And this property is in northeast Fayetteville. It's, the address as mentioned is forty eighty-one North Crossover Road. You can see here on the aerial photo, there's two homes, this is on one parcel, and then this area here to the northeast is another separate parcel that's own residential office. The overall property is about six acres. The home at forty eighty-seven Crossover was built in nineteen ninety-seven, is approximately four thousand four hundred and forty-seven square feet. The other home at forty eighty-one North Crossover was built in two thousand and one, is approximately two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine square feet. And that's from the Washington County Assessor. The applicant is proposing a tandem lot split, and to show you what's being proposed here, you can see there's one lot here, which is shown in pink, this is zone residential office. This other lot is yellow, and the dark red lines are where they want the lot lines to be, so they're proposing to move the lot lines around and split it. Part of this lot split would result in this back house here being on a tandem lot because it would have no street frontage, it would be landlocked. They would have access to Crossover Road for this existing driveway, would be planted in an access easement. To create a lot like this that does not have street frontage is a conditional use permit and, for a tandem lot. So when we look at a tandem lot, there are specific findings that have to be considered by the planning commission. And one of the main considerations is would the size of the tandem lot be compatible or have a potential adverse impact on some of the surrounding properties? And so that was one of the things that staff was concerned at, concerned when we look at this application. You can see here in the aerial photo overall, and there's some apartments here to the north and an office, used to be the youth bridge facility, but all the other property here down at the east and to the south are really large residential estates. And I actually went in and, just to compare the lot sizes, you can see this property here is kind of shown in this orange color, six acres. All of the other surrounding properties here are, you know, two acres, three acres, seventeen acres, twenty-nine acres, and they're proposing to split off a tandem lot, which is zero point eight acres, so it's quite a bit smaller. So because of that, we're recommending denial of the tandem lot. We don't feel like it meets one of the basic requirements the commission has to consider to grant one of these. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant available? If you could come up and give us your name and tell us about your project, please.
My name's Kyle Naples. I live in forty eighty-one Crossover. We, we own that property there. I guess what, where I'm coming from with this is that, you know, I'm not asking really to develop anything or change how the city's rules are on this. Those houses were built fifteen years ago, and one of the houses is just, it's probably usable under two thousand square feet, and the gentleman's lived there for years, and he wishes to purchase his property. And in order for where that sits, if you could go back to the other one, Andrew, the house isn't worth very much money. It was built a long time ago. And for him to have seventy feet of frontage in the back is gonna chew up so much real estate that the math doesn't make work, make sense for that house. It just never would. And as far as looking at, if you, would you mind going back to the next one, Andrew? Looking at this, if you look directly across the street from my property, I don't know how many different houses, those duplexes that are right there, that are all under a point eight acres, these other houses are all multi-multi-million dollar estates. This isn't a neighborhood. If there's no POA, I've lived there eleven years, I don't even know these people. They don't, it's so secluded, it doesn't bother anyone, it doesn't, you know, none of the neighbors care, they're, they're all for it, it's all our property. And so I think that comparison, it, it, I don't think it really does it justice, in my opinion. You know, that, that house was built, what year was it built? It was in ninety-seven, I think he said, something like that? It was, it was a long time ago. And I'm just asking that the guy who lives there wishes to buy his own house that he lives in, and he just wants want his lot. I, I don't see that there's a big problem, there's not a disturbance to the community, there's no change, it's already there. It would, it would disturb nothing.
If we have any questions, we'll, we'll bring you back up. Thank you. Is there any member from the public to speak to this item? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring you back to the commission, commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
Questions for staff. Andrew, is there enough, I, it's hard for me to see all these numbers. Is there enough frontage? Would there be enough frontage to make two conforming lots?
Yes, that, that is one of the things I did describe in the, in the staff report, that there's more than adequate frontage for them to split this up into multiple parcels with street frontage here.
Okay.
And so that was one of the things I did talk to Mr. Naples about on Friday, was that, you know, this lot right here, it does have to have seventy feet of frontage, but it would just have to be configured slightly differently. They'd have to, you know, either get rid of this lot and split out the lot over here. There's different ways to make the puzzle work to still meet our codes.
Okay. That's what I, I thought, that's what I was seeing. So I, I'm a little, I'm, can you help me through these lot lines for a second? Because I, what I think I'm seeing is that the proposed lot is in the top-left corner, correct? And it's generally a square?
Right.
And then this, these, then the, another lot would be below it, and it's got kind of a, I don't know what that shape would be called, that one. And then this other part to the right, the, within the yellow, yeah, that would be the easement, I guess? Or is that another lot? That's the part where I'm lost, I'm sorry.
He, he's wanting to create another buildable lot right there. And so this, this area here in the middle would be another lot, which would be the legal lot, because it has seventy feet of street frontage here, or more than seventy. And so this is proposed to split out another lot for another home to be built here, an outlot.
And then another lot to the right?
Right.
Okay, I gotcha. That, that makes more, I couldn't, that's the part I could not get to jive in my head. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
Andrew, which, which house does this garage go with? It looks like it, the garage belongs to the house, but it's, it's not an, it's now on the lot to the south.
I'll let the applicant, Andrew, I should not know who parts where on here.
Can you, can you tell me what's, you have to come up to the microphone for people at home to hear you. Why the garage that looks like it is connected to this house or closes, no, across the lot line?
And this is where this is kind of deceiving, when you look at this, that middle building is just more of a storage, it's not a usable garage, it, it, it's not connected to a facility, and there's probably a And there's probably a, I would guess, a fifteen-foot to twenty-foot retaining wall between that, where it says existing crotch, and that driveway to the north of it. So by looking at this, it looks like it's right next door, but when you're actually, when you're looking and you're standing where that garage is to see that house, you're actually looking down. There's a big retaining wall there. And that garage was built when the larger house on the south was built. So it was built to go with that.
I see. Andrew, that's very visible on Google Earth, too. I don't know if you can power G that is to pull up. Right there.
You can see that retaining wall right to the north of it. Well, here I would suggest on the, adding seventy feet to that existing house on the north, all the way up to Crossover. Even if that was a requirement to do it, you really couldn't put a driveway connecting that house. You'd still have to have a conditional use for a big shared driveway because crossover's going to be so much higher in elevation than where that driveway would come through, especially with the expansion that the highway department's going to have to do. Um, it, it would make, it would make no sense to, to construct a driveway. Financially, it couldn't be feasible, wouldn't, it wouldn't work. It's been more on a driveway than what the home is worth.
Yep, Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes.
Can I address a comment?
Sir.
Um, they could, it wouldn't, would not require a conditional use permit or any other special permission for a shared driveway. That just simply has to be in a lot split, they would just plait it in an access easement. So that, that's not an issue, just to split it out legally, plait the driveway in an access easement.
Um, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I've lost track of who holds the floor at the moment.
Uh, Commissioner Winston was last one. Okay.
Uh, may I ask a question?
Sir.
Um, so I guess I'll address this to staff, but you may have to ask the applicant, I'm not sure. How is the? What's the property regime right now? This, this is the part I'm a little, there, it seems like there are two houses on one lot? Is that correct? Both owned by you?
Correct.
Okay, and I guess, I'm guessing that the, that the house that you want to sell is a rental at the moment?
Yes.
Okay, I got you.
It's to the north, that one.
Okay, so.
My big question is, is that the house and the driveway are already there. And in order for me to sell it, I gotta give them seventy feet of frontage that they're not really ever going to be able to use. And it's just, I mean, I understand where Andrew's coming from and the city staff for sure, but I think when you just, when you're there and you see it, it's existing structure that's been there fourteen, fifteen years, I'm not certain by giving the land to make that, it makes it unsellable property.
Um, Andrew, the other question is like, yes, is it just? In R S F four, if you, you can build multiple houses on one lot, as long as you have the frontage required? What's the rule on that?
That's correct, you can build more than one house on a lot, as long as there is enough street frontage in order to be able to.
To satisfy all the requirements.
Right.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins.
While I'm normally a, okay with tandem lots, this one seems a little bit screwy. Uh, Andrew, are we talking about, um, is it staff's opinion that we should be doing sub, the subdivision here, or?
The applicant can, there's a number of ways the applicant can, could develop this property. Uh, one of them, you know, they, they could develop a subdivision, they could just split it off with, into legal lots. Um, I, I'm not really offering my opinion on that, other than the fact that, you know, the tandem lot ordinance is, is supposed to be the exception. The, the intent of our subdivision codes are to have homes fronting onto a public street. There's a lot of reasons why we do that, you know, public safety, access, uh, other things, mail service, just convenience. A lot of, a lot of reasons why you have homes onto a street.
Police and fire.
Yeah, exactly, emergency response.
Well, my question is this, is that, um, of course, these lots could also front a private street as well, couldn't they?
No, not unless they did, if they did a planned zoning district and went through and rezoned the whole property, um, you can do a private street in that case.
Okay. So, and I've driven by this probably a thousand times, I guess. The, uh, I know there are some terrain issues out there, but I don't know if the terrain issues are such that it would actually force this kind of a division and this kind of a configuration, I just, I just don't know. Um, it seems to me that, um, I don't know, it's, it seems to me like an answer to it might be to, uh, possibly do a P Z D and widen the drive that's there or what have you, and kind of do something like that, but, um, this is tough.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Commissioner Chesser.
Question for staff.
Okay.
This may not be necessarily appropriate, but I'm just curious. Is it possible to sell the, the house without subdividing the property? No. It has to be on a legal lot, well, sorry, I'm sorry, our city attorney is shaking his head, so.
Unless you did like a horizontal property regime or something, you know, other than that, you're not going to be able to sell the land separately.
Right, but I mean, that's what I was thinking of, is a horizontal property regime, but what is, what are the steps for that? I guess I'm thinking about Commissioner Hoskins' lines, sort of, is, is there another opportunity? Does that cause effectively the same problems with tandem lot, or?
No, I mean, if.
That cannot be done at this juncture with this property, basically.
I mean, they could easily legal, they could legally split this into one lot for, for each house, easily.
No, yeah, I got that, I understand that.
I mean, they, if they, it would, it would be unusual, it is, it does, it does happen, there's some single-family homes in Fayetteville that are under, they're not under fee simple ownership, they're under a horizontal property regime, like a condo. You're just buying the building itself, that is possible.
Okay. And I will wish for, by the way.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought that in my head, but I guess I didn't say it out loud, Mr. Chair, I apologize.
Any other comments, motions?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Chesser.
Well, yeah. I'm sympathetic to the position that the applicant's in, but as I've sort of mentioned before my tenure, before this gig was on board of adjustment. And I feel like there are fairly rigid findings that usually be, have to be found to, um, allow variance of this type. And I guess, even though, I, I mean, I don't think the problem was created by the applicant, maybe just purchased by the applicant, but in this case, given the frontage, I don't see how I can agree that a variance is allowable, even though I'm sympathetic to the position you're in. Um, so I find myself having to agree with staff. I'm gonna move to deny C U P thirteen dash four-four-nine-nine with staff recommendations of approval. I'm sorry, with staff, sorry. You're right, I'm so used to saying that phrase. Strike the conditions of approval comment. Second?
Okay. I have a, uh, motion from Commissioner Chesser and a second from Commissioner Pennington. Any other comments? I'm sorry, what was the motion here?
Deny.
Uh, Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Chesser?
Yes.
Pennington?
Yes.
Honcho?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
No.
Bunt?
No.
Noble?
No.
Autry?
No.
Hoskins?
Great. No.
The motion fails.
You'll need a motion to approve the conditional use now.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Winston?
Uh, I'll move to approve conditional use, uh, thirteen dash four-four-nine-nine for, uh, forty-eighty-one North Crossover Road, Naples. Second?
With the condition stated by staff, right?
Yes. Okay.
Have, have a motion from Commissioner Winston and a second from Commissioner Autry. Uh, Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Chair, I could recommend, uh, one condition of approval, uh, potentially for the motioner to consider, just simply to be that, uh, the driveway for both homes shall be placed in a shared access easement.
Perfect. So moved. So added.
That'd be number four.
So the motion, uh, has four conditions of approval, the last of which, uh, requires that the driveway is put into a, an access easement.
Shared, shared.
A shared access easement.
Okay, Mr. Garner, please call the roll.
Chesser?
Still sympathetic, but no.
Pennington?
No.
Honcho?
Yes.
Cook?
No.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunt?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Wouldn't it be funny if I said? Wouldn't it be funny if I said no right now?
I'll think you can bump out of your own mouth.
Yes. He said it.
So which one of you got seconded at that?
Autry. Okay, thanks.
Earproved. Barely.
Okay. Um, the next item we have is administrative item thirteen dash forty-five-ten, which chapters one sixty-six, point zero eight, access management. Uh, Mr. Volker, Mr. Staff report, please.
Chair. Some amendments proposed by staff, chapter one, six oh eight, our access management code, that was adopted back in two thousand and eight. I believe it's been working very well over the last couple of years with improvements to access and safety with new developments. Do appreciate the planning commission city turning, uh, on those discussions with us during our development, for more proper use. Most of the changes we're proposing, I really, I really tend to clarify some of the codes. The codes are written and we've worked through them. We start to realize where maybe some of the weaknesses are in the language, or maybe where you might find confusion, whether it be at meetings or, or these pre-development meetings that we have with developers. And so the, the real intent here is to, to clarify some statements that are already in the code. Uh, a few items where we've tweaked it, I will go over. As I mentioned, these items Thursday at agenda session. Our block layout connectivity currently has two standards. So if it's a residential street, which is a twenty-foot street curb-to-curb, or a local street, which is twenty-eight feet, that allows for on-street parking on one side, so it's twenty-eight feet curb-to-curb. We have two different standards, uh, although those are used interchangeably. So if you're building a new residential subdivision, you'll probably have many of both of those streets. It just depends on whether you feel that on-street parking is necessary or not. And so we have two different standards for those. Our recommendation is to create one standard. So it's just a matter of, it's just about the use of the street, not whether it's advantageous to have a longer block length or shorter block length. It's one standard, and so you're really looking at the, the street that you need for that development. Uh, we're recommending six hundred and sixty feet. Uh, would be that same thing I noted, noticed in the staff report, it says six hundred, but the ordinance is six hundred and sixty. It is intended to be six hundred and sixty. You'll notice as you move from that kind of residential designation of six hundred and sixty, it jumps to thirteen hundred and twenty, two times that length for collector, and then two times again up to the arterial standard of, uh, twenty-six forty, half a mile, in those standards. So you're trying to create that grid, and that's why those distances are, are, um, set up that way. Uh, on F two and F three A, there were some standards that go back, uh, a long time, long before the access management code for single-family homes, some real basic standards, five-foot separation for your driveway off of your neighbor's property line, ten feet between driveways. When it was rewritten in two thousand and eight, a lot of those standards got, I think, kind of jumbled up with some of the other standards for commercial, for apartments, and those types of developments. And it, it had noted residential subdivisions, so then there's a lot of confusion of whether that meant only single-family homes or only homes in residential subdivisions, exactly how that applied. The intent was always to be a single-family home, so we simply just broke those two standards apart and said, here's a standard for single-family homes, here's a standard for other types of development, to make it very clear on the front end when someone's looking at these codes. Uh, E two is a new proposal. Uh, this is a brand-new section of the code that we've been, we've looked at and talked about internally for a number of years, and that's the double-frontage lots. Uh, we provided an example, I believe on the last page of the staff report, on page nine, actually, showing, uh, a subdivision in the city where you've got two-tiered lots. So that's, uh, two-saxper lots. And then you've got the double-frontage lots where you've got a street on the other side. And that really does three things, in our opinion. Uh, the most important one, as we've kind of began to discuss internally again, is inefficient use of, of infrastructure and, and the cost, long-term cost on the front end, the short-term cost on the front end for the developer, and the long-term maintenance cost for the city of Fayetteville, uh, when these types of situations, uh, are developed. That's the biggest thing we've looked at, uh, and I have some examples as we begin to talk about this more and if this discussion moves on to another meeting, certainly we can talk about this more. Um, but that's the biggest one, I think, that's a crux for us. The second is, when you look at actually how this develops, so take it away from the dollars and cents and, and how it looks on a piece of paper, but when you walk out on, into the physical environment, you walk down one of these streets, and what that presents for that neighborhood, and is that presenting, uh, a good street realm, a safe street for pedestrians, something that, uh, I think we'd be proud to look at as far as, uh, the outcome of development proposal. And I think when you see some of the items that, that we've looked at as far as where you have fence rows running down both sides of the street, I don't think that's an appealing street scheme, that's not creating this kind of neighborhood cohesion. It's really separating developments from one another, and separating the developments from that public realm. Uh, and that leads into this kind of no-man's land, where if you were walking down the street, you might walk a quarter of a mile and there's nowhere to go. You're simply in, in a corridor of fences before you get to the next block. And so by creating, by trying to eliminate or limit the use of double-frontage lots, you'll create some of those openings, so you'll have the, the public streets intersecting those areas more often. And you'll, you'll kind of open up that public realm. I mean, you're still going to have some fences along these streets, but you just won't have this entire corridor of a fence that really blocks us off. So we really see three benefits to this, uh, as far as this code change. And there may be situations where it's completely appropriate, where maybe you have a very, very high-traffic arterial roadway that's not covered under one of the built-in exemptions. That's an opportunity where the planning commission certainly should look at this, uh, and hear from the applicant and, and potentially staff as to maybe this var, uh, variance should be granted in that particular situation. But when you're looking at maybe a collector's street that's not high-volume, it's more part of just the internal network of other neighborhoods, there's probably no reason why houses couldn't front on, on that, uh, particular street, or why they couldn't be set up differently so that you have a better streetscape. Uh, and again, not that double use of street-fronted sidewalk, uh, drainage structures and those types of things where you're really, uh, providing additional costs. So we think it's a good change, but, uh, it is a, an addition to the code, so we're happy to discuss the, uh, benefits or, um, if there's any concerns with that. And certainly if, if it's something y'all want to see again and see more examples and want to think about. We're not pushing for this to move forward tonight, any part of this ordinance, so we can take our time with it as, as you see fit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Certain member of the public to speak to the side. Seeing that, we'll bring you back to the commission, commissioners.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Commissioner Hoskins.
Chesser?
Yes, sir.
Um, which I know you, you've gone over this, whatever. I want to get a little, little bit more in depth on this. Let's say you've got a, let's take for example the road that Andrew has pulled up, pulled up here. Uh, you've got, I believe that's Persimmon?
Yes.
At the bottom. Um, in this situation, with what you've got here, houses would front Persimmon, and then other houses would front the first interior street. Is that correct? In other words, had this developed out, all those backyards would not be on Persimmon. Is that right? If that developed out like you're proposing?
If you just, that's one potential scenario. I've looked at this particular block, and if you had approached this particular piece of property undeveloped with some of the infrastructure that was in place with these standards, the double-frontage requirement, you could have laid this out several different ways, and you would not have had to have backyards back up to Persimmon.
Okay, so yet, I think we're all probably fairly opposed to multiple driveways entering Persimmon Drive, which it would either be that case, or the, or the other case is, you've got a house that fronts Persimmon, but you don't have any access to Persimmon, so it'll have to be accessed with a rear driveway, an alley-tuck driveway or whatever. Or, the third option is reconfigure the streets to where you have a street perpendicular to Persimmon every two lots. And none of those sound very appealing to me.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, if you lay this out, one option would then to pretend that Broyles is Persimmon Street. And so, yeah, you're tying these local streets into Persimmon, so rotate everything.
Yeah.
You're getting intersections at probably every five, six hundred feet along Persimmon, which isn't too bad. Persimmon is listed as an arterial roadway, but it spreads a little volume of road. But that's just one design alternative where you can make the code not have individual curb cuts for every single house, or have an alley, or have them front. This is one design option solution.
In RSF-four zoning, from what we see in Fayetteville currently, how deep are the lots typically front to back? Aren't they around seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred and thirty feet?
They vary widely. I mean, if you look at this one, if I remember correctly, these are eighty by one sixty, one eighty, something like that. They're relatively deep.
So those intersections we're talking about there, they're not seven hundred feet apart, they're more like three hundred and twenty feet apart.
Yeah, these right here, if I remember, I thought that was two hundred, fifty, seventy-two hundred and fifty.
That would be interesting to know. And then, then if you've got two major roads intersecting, boy, you're really in trouble, huh? Like where Semen might intersect with, say, Rupel. Would be two very, very busy, very high-volume streets. That'd really be a kind of a mess, wouldn't it?
In which situation, which streets?
Well, let's, let's assume that, I think that's Broyles there on the left now, is it? But let's assume that was the new and improved widened Rupel Parkway.
Okay.
Where, where it would cross Persimmon, which we would hope one of these days goes over the freeway and it carries a lot of traffic. Now you've got two major roads, well, that'd really be a lot of mess, huh?
Yeah, and, and that's one of the points I brought up, you know, when, think about the conversations we had with the access management ordinance over the last couple of years with curb cuts. This code, whether it be the one we're talking about tonight, in particular the double-frontage lots, or if we're talking about the existing curb cut separations that we require, none of those codes are going to work in a hundred percent of situations. We're going to have to come before the planning commission, sometimes with our support, maybe sometimes not with our support, and actually talk about some of these matters, because it's unique to have, honestly, this many non-local streets surrounding the subdivision. This is a pretty unique circumstance right here. And so while it's a good example to show what we're attempting to avoid in a few different aspects, it also brings us some challenging points for us to answer, because this is unique. You're looking at, I think, two collectors and an arterial surrounding this piece of property. So this is unique. And, you know, I was looking at this development earlier today, and just wondering, had you brought these streets straight out, homespun, trail dust, and just brought these two streets straight out, just like you did here, what would the result be? Well, the result would be that these would become double lots here, double lots here. And so you would lose this whole fence line. You'd end up having these intersections out on forty-six. You would save two hundred and fifty feet of linear feet of street, which amounts to forty, fifty thousand dollars, probably, just an upfront cost. But maybe this needs to stay this way, because Persimmon maybe is a long-term arterial connector, and maybe it needs to be a backyard.
Right.
But that's, that's something for the planning commission, and with subdivisions and block lengths, the planning commission is probably going to see it every single time. A hundred percent of the time, you're going to be involved in these discussions.
Whenever, I think we had two block length numbers, one was six sixty and one was eight eighty?
The current code is six hundred for residential and eight hundred for local.
Okay, it's six hundred and eighty, I'm sorry. And so of these two numbers, staff picked the shorter one.
We took six sixty.
I took six sixty, okay, all right, thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Jesse.
Since you're there, Jesse, now at the southern end where these double-fronted lots face Persimmon.
This is, this just occurred to me as a potential way to game the system, which is, can I put a long, narrow lot along Persimmon behind all those houses?
Could you split these in half and?
No, no, no. Just one long, narrow lot where that fence is, so that those houses technically don't double-front. They back onto a long, say, POA-owned lot.
Potentially is.
Okay.
I was just curious.
I mean, wouldn't that end up, wouldn't that leave you with the same, I guess the fence would, could be pushed farther back, which would... I, the best example I can think of of what you're talking about is, I went out to pick up my wife at the airport recently, and when you go down, there's one section you go, and it's just like, it's like driving down a tunnel almost. And it's awful. And I see that sometimes in, there are some neighbors in Springdale I can think of, and there are some neighbors in Fayetteville, and I do totally agree that I think we would like to avoid this situation where you've got fairly busy street pedestrian fence for long, long periods of time, with the occasional break for probably quite a high-volume of traffic coming in out of the neighborhood, and then the same thing some more. That is not at all walkable. So I applaud that effort. I also see where Commissioner Hoskins is coming from, that there are some situations where, well, what do you do in that case? But I guess I kind of feel like that's the point of you giving us some leeway, right? We could decide in this case, look, it's an unfortunate situation, but Persimmon is going to end up being sort of like the interstate case, I guess, which you gave an out for there, right?
Yeah, we build in some automatic situations where, of course, you know, it's just not possible. I think we'll, we'll see some, some cases where the depth of a piece of property, there's not a lot of depth to it, and so it restricts you on how many streets you can build, or if you can build a street at all. I mean, there's, there's going to be situations that come up. This is another example where you've got three fairly high-volume, or at least higher-classification streets, intended to serve higher volumes, and it's unique to this.
It's a weird situation, I understand that. So I think that, I guess I feel like we've got a little bit of a case where it makes it sort of incumbent upon the developer to, to express a little bit of creativity to solve this problem, instead of just, you know, kind of doing what we would have done in the past, which I approve of. On the flip side, do you have any concern that that will lead to, sometimes when we have to get creative in development, it means costs go up. So do staff have any concern that this would, the staple's already a little bit difficult sometimes to buy a lower-priced house in this market. Are you at all concerned that this could exacerbate that problem? I guess that's hard for you to predict.
Yeah, I mean, you could up the density in this development. Like I said, these lots are fairly large. I think you could probably increase your density if you chose to. Again, the example I looked at just right before this meeting was removing this section of the street, and this section of the street, and just taking these through. There's no net loss. You end up with a hundred and twelve lots in both scenario, and you save two hundred and fifty feet of, of street, and that's...
Which ultimately is a lot of maintenance cost for the city.
You're probably looking at the, the whole cost.
Over the life of the street.
And it's a savings to the developer upfront. That's one example. We might switch to another example and come out on the other end. And so, yeah, it's difficult to answer that. But I think it does force a little bit more creativity on the front end to look at what your options are.
In light of that, I, you know, I, I like what you're doing, and I'm going to move that we approve, or is it forward?
Recommend.
Recommend, forward with recommendation of approval of administrative item thirteen dash four five one zero.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Following up on the lines of Commissioner Chester. The, of course, most of the things, most of what goes through the developer's head, of course, is, how do I get the greatest number of lots for the least amount of money? And my concern is actually a little bit different direction. Of course, putting, being a developer aside, I would say that there would be developers that would come in and use this tool that you've created against us, okay? Because, I mean, I'd be looking at Persimmon going, wow, there's a street that I can use that I don't have to build. And so now I want to enter that street with driveways all over the place. And of course, this commission and city staff is not going like that at all. Of course, the developers are going to reply, well, what do you mean? You're the one that put this together. I'm just following what you put together. Of course, so I can see where that could, could create some real problem. Excuse me, some real problem. And so anyway, I'm at this. I personally think we probably ought to look at this a little bit longer before we forward it, but there's a lot of different scenarios. This could work out really good, or it could work out really, really bad. Please.
Mr. Chair.
So actually, do you have a question then, based on what Commissioner Hoskins just said? Wouldn't the, would the classification, well, this is for the city attorney, because we've bumped up against this before, would we be required to grant access onto Persimmon in that case?
A property owner does have a property interest in access to a street that abuts their property. If the city denies all access, which you can do, you might have to pay for it. You probably would have to pay for it, because you would be basically taking away a property interest owned by that property owner.
So we would have to allow that many curb cuts on the Persimmon in this case?
I think at, I think at the minimum, we, we would be able to require them to have shared curb cuts, so that would make it in half the number. I think it wouldn't be unreasonable for us to say, yes, you can have access, but you must join with your neighbor to have access. But that's still a lot of curb cuts coming into an arterial. I, I think what we've had here is, we've got kind of a problem of two competing interests, you know? We really don't like to see fences down the street, and yet...
We don't like curb cuts either.
We don't want less curb cuts. And the way we get fences instead of curb cuts is that you allow the developer to face his houses the other way, which are much more likely to sell, because there will be some protection of noise and sight from the drivers, and so the houses are more likely to sell. This is a more expensive way for the developer to have developed it, so there must have been a reason. And I think probably the reason is, is because people don't want to buy a house that's fronting on an arterial. They would rather have some protection of the arterial, and so that justify the developer spending more money to build this extra road, interior road. And, you know, this, obviously, if you look at this subdivision, I don't think it's, it's the kind of subdivision we think is actually perfectly designed. It was P G D, I think, what, the way Andrew remembers it. I remember it coming through, and, and there were questions about it then. However, if we try to absolutely prohibit what happened here, so that people can't have a fence to protect their backyard from an arterial, then we're probably going to end up with driveways going into it, because they won't be able to sell the house for enough, the lot for enough, and so they're going to save money by not building another road and then driveways into the arterial. It's, it's kind of a balancing test, and it's, we can't have it both ways.
Just a second, Jesse, I'm sorry. So, well, and I'm actually going to ask you, Jesse, so I'll just let you say whatever you want, anyway. Would we get a chance in that juncture to sort of make a decision, under your code, do you think?
Yeah, I mean, we're...
We, we could sort of say, yeah, that curb cut idea is even worse, so we're going to allow the fence in this case.
Yeah, these, I mean, I'm sure there's some situations I'm not thinking of, but for the most part, you're going to see these subdivisions. They're building streets, just to build streets for a large-scale development. Typically, the infrastructure is there typically. If they're going to put in a new street, then again, the planning commission is going to see it as part of a large scale. The large majority of these are going to be subdivisions, primary flat, final flat, and the planning commission is going to review all of these. And one of the things you look at is safety for the development. That's one of your primary findings in these. And so, yes, you would be able to balance the, the kind of pros and cons of multiple curb cuts, or fences, or infrastructure, sidelines, block length, you know, all that falls into the planning commission's purview. To kind of go along with some of the discussions we've just been having in the last couple of minutes. Again, an opportunity here, this being unique, Persimmon being this arterial, you know, they've got Broyles here, which is a fairly high-volume road as well, let's say, connector access all the way to Farmington. And these are side yards. You can apply the same standard to Persimmon, where you're, again, you're flipping your streets, running north and south, and so it's not rear yard or side yard. Now, have you completely solved the fence problem? No, but you've limited the impact of that, so you've provided these openings. So if you're a pedestrian walking down the street, you feel like you have a little bit more refuge. It feels a little bit safer to you. It's not a canyon. And again, it's not to create a double frontage. We haven't prohibited corner lots, you're never going to do that. So you're going to have some extra street frontage per lot here, but certainly not to the degree that you have in this particular situation. So again, I think you can design around these. Again, the standard is to make the front-end design process a little bit more in-depth. This is an example of Mount Comfort Road. This is a minor arterial, again, high-volume roadway, and this is a residential subdivision developed RSF-four. This is by right development. The planning commission reviewed this. We had the same standard in place that we have in the code now, which is, we've moved it under single-family homes as well to make it, again, more clear, but the same standard we applied here is that individual curb cuts for arterial and collector's streets shall be discouraged when necessary to kind of protect the access rights of each property owner. Curb cuts along arterial and collector's streets may be shared between two or more lots. And so again, between the staff, the developer, and the planning commission, we came up with this scenario here where they've got their shared drive, so they're able to ingress and egress from their private portion of the property without fear of being out in the middle of the public street. So it's actually safer for them. It provides them a little bit of buffer off the road as well. So this is, again, just another design alternative to some of the situations.
So Jesse, can you go back to Persimmon real quickly? Right now, what happened on Persimmon would be allowed by right, correct? Without the, without the change in the code?
The only thing that's different is you may have one or two of these streets punching out, because I think these block lengths are too long.
Fine, but...
Current code, but yeah.
But I'm saying...
Led to double frontage.
Essentially, that double-frontage thing would just be allowed.
That's correct.
It seems like, yes, I feel like, the reason I kind of feel like I can support this, Commissioner Hoskins, is that I feel like this situation, if it had to happen, could still happen. I mean, we could still opt for this. But by changing the language in this way, it kind of gives us some choice, and the ability to sort of say, yeah, it's not necessary in this case. We're fine with those curb cuts on this particular street, or not. So I guess I feel like we still, we haven't boxed ourselves into a corner, I don't believe, to where we have to accept something. So I'm going to, I'm going to relinquish the floor and stand on my motion. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Winston.
What's the burden on the developer to get a variance for, for doing something other than what you're recommending?
We've got variances under design standards. We have two variance sections, actually, in one sixty-six oh eight. Kind of depending on what type of codes we're talking about, so I'll read both of those. Says block length standards may be varied by the planning commission when terrain, topographical features, existing barriers, or street size, or shape of the lot, or other unusual conditions justify departure. That is one sixty-six oh eight E-D, or E-one D. That is one sixty-six oh eight E D or E one D. Uh, the second one is under F access management. It says, in order to protect the ingress and egress access rights to a street and abutting property owner, a variance to the curb cut minimum shall be granted by the planning commission to allow an ingress, egress curb cut at the safest functional location along the property. Such a curb cut may be required to be shared with an adjoining parcel feasible. If a parcel on the corner of an arterial or collector street provides such short frontage along a major street that there is no safe ingress, egress functional location on that street, the planning commission may deny the curb cut or may limit such curb cut to ingress or egress only.
So as you can see, neither one of them applies to a double-sided street. And in fact, one concern I have is, is the language that is being used here where it says, with the exception of corner lots, double street frontage lots are prohibited. And then they have two or three things where they can be unprohibited, except where the lots front an access restricted roadway, which is going to be a really big street, an interstate or something, uh, such as interstate or expressways, or where topography or physical constraints require the formation of such lots. So that's what a developer would have to prove. So it's not just like coming to you and say, hey, I don't want to do it, that, you know, I've got a good reason not to do it, but it's not because you've got a mountain behind you or a river behind you or you're fronting an expressway. Well, then you really don't have the power to grant a variance because this is very clear language, you're prohibiting this. So, uh, that's one reason. It's probably good that it takes a little bit of time to look at this, uh, because it's not going to be necessarily saved by a variance procedure. One of them is curb cuts and one is lot length, uh, length of the street, which neither one of them apply to this.
Mr. Chair.
And I do have, uh, I do have a question for you real quick, Jesse. The scenario that we're looking at right now, as it is with Broyles Street being an arterial, and is it Forty-Eighth Street that is, uh, that's a collector, correct? Am I, am I terming that correctly?
Uh, I believe Broyles is a collector-
Collector.
And Persimmon is a minor arterial.
Well, now, what's the other road?
Forty-six, I want to say it's a collector as well.
Is it? Okay. Well, just in a, in a situation like that, it almost looks to me that the design or the layout of the, of the subdivision like that would be almost, you know, you're, you're trying to push the traffic to the bigger roads. You know, I mean, I understand what you're saying as far as bringing it out, you know, and, and I guess having access at both ends of the street, but I don't know, you know, some of those roads, I don't know if you'd want that much vehicular activity, so to speak. I don't know, that's not, I, I don't know if that would be the intent to women, but I, it just looks to me like with that type of design that you're trying to get the traffic going to the bigger, better road. You know what I mean? And that, that's kind of, looking at that scenario versus what we, what we've been talking about, that's, uh, I'd be hesitant. Uh, that, just to kind of resonate with Commissioner Hoskins is saying earlier, that's on, I'm in that camp. I, I think we need to, to discuss more.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Just on Broyles here, of course, like in this scenario, we would want to keep these fences off of Persimmon because that's the road that those houses back up to. So along Broyles, what's, to keep the same thing from happening, fences just in the side yard instead of the backyard, I mean, I mean, basically, you've got the breaks of the street and that's about it. The, um, as far as carrying those streets on out to Forty-Sixth Street, like you were talking about earlier, and you, you know, you've got less footage of street to build and you have no net loss of, of lots or what have you. You know, there's another thing to think about, um, especially in the flat out there, is you end up with these streets, you know, that continually, this grid pattern of streets that goes through neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood, and you create this long tunnel of, of streets, of course, very few places in favor of that occur because of the terrain or whatever. I'll, I'll submit to that, but, you know, like out there for instance, you know, I mean, you could have, you know, residential streets that have that tunnel effect as you go on for miles and miles and miles. And I don't, I don't think I'd find that very attractive. But, you know, in one case, you know, you've got the fences in the backyards that lining the street, and in the other case, you've just got the fences in the side yard lining the street. So I don't know that, I don't know that you're really accomplishing much. And, um, as far as, you know, a developer bringing this through and you get to planning commission level, well, one of the things we really cannot do, or we shouldn't, is design somebody's project for them. And, um, and so when they show up subdivision or planning commission or what have you, I'm like, you know, they have a particular design that they want, okay? And, well, we're not going to go, go for that because we don't want driveways entering major streets or whatever, et cetera. Um, I think, I think we've got to consider this a lot before we move forward. I think there's a lot of, a lot of things we need to discuss.
Mr. Chair.
Well, I, Mr. Fulcher had a question.
And like I said at the beginning, we're in no hurry to move this forward. I absolutely appreciate Commissioner Chester's, uh, support on this. We, we can take as much time as the commission feels and can research and provide, you know, disinformation. You just let us know. As, on, on the side yards, again, I don't want this to be about just fences. I think that's the visual thing, that, that's what sticks out to me, honestly. It sticks out to me the most because I can see that, I've seen it out on some of these streets. But again, you have to look at the amount of street, sidewalk, storm drains, curb, gutter that now exist down the street. This is probably about twelve hundred feet now, it's been doubled up on this side of the street. That's twice the cost in long-term maintenance for the city in these types of situations. This exists again on Forty-Sixth Street, and there probably was, you know, I'm sure there was some, uh, kind of comparison for the developer on the front end of how he wanted to lay this out. Again, I go back to, there are multiple design solutions for this particular situation, and, you know, this is a harder one to look at because it's unique, it has three busy streets around it. I don't, uh, certainly disagree with our city attorney on putting ourselves in a situation where it can be varied. There's also a variance section where we do talk about under the general development variance in chapter one fifty-six that may cover those concerns, but if we need to address something in the code to, to give the planning commission the exact language-
If you would like it, I could get with Jesse and Andrew and maybe look at the variance procedures already and the general variance procedures in the development code as well as any possible specific variance on this, uh, so that, and working on the language to make sure that it's, it's language that could be varied if you all believe that it would be appropriate to vary it. So I'm certainly happy to work with planning to try to do that.
Mr. Gardner, did you have something that you would add?
I just wanted to echo really what Mr. Fulcher was talking about. I mean, it, you know, we, we're happy to look at this further. I mean, we're, you know, what we're trying to do here is, I think everybody knows when you go into a nice neighborhood that feels good, you drive through it, you walk through it, uh, you know what those good neighborhoods feel like. And, but it's very difficult to write a code that really gets to that and really creates that. So that's what we're struggling with. And we feel like kind of adding this two-tier lot thing requires developers to be a little bit more creative in the way they lay out their neighborhoods, but maybe we need to look at this a little bit further, it sounds like, potentially writing some variances and/or just look at this a little bit more. But I didn't hear anything else on any of the other revisions to the code. I mean, but if, if this is the only thing, you know, maybe we just table this for a couple of weeks and then we'll get with city attorney and, and try to address this further.
Okay. Well, I know we have a motion from Commissioner Chester.
Well, Mr. Chair, when you're done, I'll, I'll ask-
I, I'm just-
Well, um, a couple of things quickly before I withdraw my motion. I guess I would, one thing I don't like to see is block after block after block of this kind of grid. I know we want a grid pattern and that's walkable. I feel like there would be an alternate scenario here, especially in the P G D, where you could vary density by adding some multi-family, doing some tiered changes of density as you move in. There's a number of levels that I think we could encourage to potentially get away from just rows and rows and rows of conventional housing and this problem that Jesse's talking about. It does take some creativity. I will say about Andrew's comment, I feel like you have the, the, what is the famed quote about pornography? I can't define it, but I know it when I see it. Um, and we're having sort of that problem with a good feeling neighborhood. Well, I can't, I can't tell you what to do, but I know it when I'm walking it or something. So let me just say that I, I brag on city staff pretty frequently and talk about how my job as commissioner is made, um, quite a bit easier by being able to rely, being able to know that I can rely on city staff's good judgment. Even so, uh, given the city attorney's comments, I think he makes a point about prohibited, I would like us to have flexibility, so I feel like maybe that particular word needs to be looked at at the very least, and I would be happy to see him work with staff. But I would like staff to continue, I would like to say that I support staffs continuing in the direction that they're going. Um, I see the points of the other commissioners. So given that, I'm going to withdraw my motion. And if I may, I'm going to move to table instead. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, it would be table administrative item thirteen dash four five one zero. Uh, is two weeks enough?
I believe so.
For two weeks, um, with instructions of staff and the city attorney to work, um, on sort of working out the problems identified by commission this evening.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Chester and a second from Commissioner Pennington. Mr. Gardner, would please call the roll.
Chester?
Yes.
Pennyton?
Yes.
Honcho?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Double?
Yes.
Otray?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Bushen carries.
Okay. Uh, the next item up is administrative item thirteen dash forty-five eleven for chapter one fifty-one, point zero one, definitions. Let's see, Mr. Fulcher, you're up.
Okay. Hopefully this one will be on second. Sort of one I think I've ever written, so I think it will be. This is an amendment to chapter one fifty-one, another item brought before, brought forward by staff. This is really just altering a few words in the definition for tandem lot. The current definition, we put in a report, uh, you know what it is? We've just talked about it, we talk about it every couple of meetings. It's a lot that doesn't have full required frontage on the street, less than fifty percent of the required frontage. It tends to look like an L or a flag, has a little stem going out to the street with a larger portion behind a lot that does have the required frontage along a public street. In looking at the language, our zoning development administrator is charged with interpreting some of these nuances within the code, and we've looked at that language where it says required frontage. In his opinion, the required frontage is that required by the zoning. So that, for R S F four subdivision or zoning district, that is seventy feet of frontage is required. So let's assume the lot was platted a long time ago or something unique happened and it was only sixty feet or sixty-eight feet. And they even went before the board of adjustments. The board of adjustments said, sure, your lot is now conforming, we recognize it as an older lot. It still doesn't have the required frontage. It's just kind of the nuance of the language. So our proposal is to change that to a conforming lot. So whether it be seventy required by R S F four or something less that has been addressed by another board under a variance situation, and then ultimately the condition used for tandem lot comes before the planning commission, so you'll have the, the end say in any of these situations. This just kind of gets rid of some of these situations we've seen where a lot may not have the required frontage required by zoning. So this is our proposed amendment for chapter one fifty-one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any member of the public here to speak to this item? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, his first up, Commissioner Hoskins.
Jesse, um, if a person planted a lot a long time ago, it's fifty feet of frontage or whatever in R S F four zoning, if they've gone to the board of adjustments, then they now have the required frontage, do they not?
No, they have their frontage. It was, again, this is the nuance of the language, we talked about this internally. Ultimately, the zoning development administrator, the person in charge of these sections of U D C, looked at it and went, well, if you had a non-conforming lot and the board of adjustment made it a conforming lot, yes, that's one thing, but they do not meet the required frontage. The required frontage is that what the zoning code requires, the zoning chapter requires, not what the board of adjustments granted by another action.
Okay.
So just because you would have an existing lot that was conforming when it was made or created, or didn't have to conform because it's that old, uh, if it doesn't conform or you haven't been to the board of adjustments, then that's not a conforming lot. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you would have either a conforming lot or non-conforming lot. And, uh, so if it's conforming, then it's going to have the required frontage, or, or would likely have the required frontage.
So a non-conforming, pre-existing lot is still non-conforming and, and you could not do a tandem lot behind it.
Right. The way that it's been interpreted, that's correct.
I, I, what? So-
The board of adjustments cannot solve the problem of the language. If, if you need seventy feet of frontage to meet the zoning code to do a tandem lot and you only have sixty, now, the board of adjustments can address this frontage requirement for you, but by definition, the tandem lot says that it has, the front lot has to have the required frontage.
Yeah, I think I was approaching it a little differently. I think I was approaching it that if you have a sixty-foot wide lot and modern-day zoning is, you have to have seventy feet, and you go to the board of adjustments and, well, mine was planted, you know, years ago, I need my lot to be conforming, so granted you're conforming at sixty feet then, well, now it's a conforming lot, and that fifty percent that you're talking about here should be based on at sixty feet. And so, um, I guess, uh, um, what's puzzling here is that it's either conforming or it's non-conforming. It's, you know, can't get kind of pregnant, in other words. I mean, it either is or isn't. Whether that's by virtue of the, the modern zoning or the board of adjustments, take your choice, but one way or the other, it's either conforming or not. And so, does that fifty percent, um, is it relative to current zoning or is it relevant to what the, that the board of adjustments, board of adjustments made itself?
The board of adjustments just concerns the conforming lot, not the proposed tandem lot.
I understand, but this is based on whether it's conforming or not.
The, the language reads, the proposed language, it says, a lot, and this is consistent under the existing and the proposed language. So a tandem lot is a lot that has less than the required, again, the use of required, so less than fifty percent of the required frontage. So let's say with R S F four, since it's a common zoning designation, the required frontage is seventy feet on a public street. A lot which has less than fifty percent, so less than thirty-five feet, uh, would be considered a tandem lot.
Okay. I'll just take your word for it.
Ultimately, we're not trying to change anything other than the fact that if the lot, it's either, I, I kind of went with you on conforming, non-conforming. The board of adjustments can address that for somebody. If it says required, the board of adjustments can't help them out. The code is too strict in that regard, and we're simply trying to loosen up that word so we can address these other situations that we all know that happen.
Okay.
That, that's the intent, is just to loosen up that, the stringency of the order.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
I move the report administrative item thirteen dash four five one one to the city council with the recommendation for approval, provided that the city attorney does not say that I'm totally wrong for that.
You are not totally wrong.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Chester and a second from Commissioner Winston. Mr. Gardner, would please call the roll.
Chester?
Yes.
Pennyton?
Yes.
Honcho?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Double?
Yes.
Otray?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Bushen carries.
Okay. Last item tonight is administrative item thirteen dash forty-four eighty-six for the United Development Code, amendment to chapter one seventy-eight, outdoor vendors. Uh, Mr. Olson has this one in.
Yeah, we're going to let Peter Nierengarten, our sustainability director, uh, project manager on this side, go present.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Peter Nierengarten. I'm the director of sustainability and strategic planning for the city. The amendments before you on U D C chapter one seventy-eight, outdoor mobile vendors is something my staff has been working with, um, planning, been working with the mayor, been working with Holderman Petty on for quite a number of months now. So before you, we have a series of, of significant changes to chapters one seventy-eight oh four, Under one seventy-eight oh four, one change under D two A is that we're asking for all of the permit applications that come in to now be joint applicants between the property owner and the mobile vendor applicant, and we're doing that by asking for personal information signatures from the property owner as well as the mobile vendor applicant. Under the, under the next proposed change, the temporary permits would be extended from their current limit of ninety days to a period of six months. That's being offered as a, as a change under section B for a couple of reasons. Staff feels that it would allow mobile vendors to more adequately test the market, buy right to be there longer. It also is an attempt at reducing some of the staff workload associated with multiple number of variance requests that are coming in for the mobile vendor permits. The next change is changing the requirement that after expiration of a temporary permit, currently a mobile vendor has to move a half mile away from their previously permitted location, we're reducing that to a quarter mile distance. Next, we are changing, proposing to change the language that calls anything longer than that, currently ninety-day period, currently you have to apply for a variance, and we're proposing to change that to, to apply for an annual permit now, and that permit would be good, would be limited to one year. All annual permits would expire on January thirty, excuse me, on January first. And a permit, a mobile vendor permit holder could request for multiple annual permits year after year, thereby essentially establishing like a mobile vendor pod for that particular location, but each year those annual permit requests would come back to you all, and you would be, you'd have the ability to review the site for potential increase in requirements such as greater tree planting, you know, sidewalks, basically site improvements could be required year after year when those permits come back to you. The next change is for those permits that are seeking that, that annual permit, they're, they're now required to bring to you a list of nearby businesses that sell similar products and services. Currently, staff is doing much of that research in terms of what other competing businesses are nearby, we're now trying to put that workload on the applicant, again, to try to reduce some of the staff workload. We are, we included a section for exemptions for some special types of mobile vendors selling fireworks and lemonade stands and similar sorts of things. There's a section in there on prohibited conduct, and then we're also requiring that mobile vendors require with the regulations of the Americans with Disabilities Act for those mobile vendors that allow citizens to enter the mobile vendor. So, those are all changes under one seventy-eight oh four. Under one seventy-eight oh three, we're proposing that that section, which currently only regulates sidewalk vendors, be expanded to include food trucks, and under that section, we're defining what a food truck is, essentially a food truck is a mobile vendor that goes away every night, they're not fixed or stationary on that site for longer than a, about a twenty-three hour period or twenty-two hour period, I think is what it's limited to. Again, the mobile food trucks would, that permit would be graded jointly to the property owner and the applicant. The food truck, there's a requirement that they not match, duplicate the primary food or beverage service being offered on an adjacent or adjoining piece of property, and then food truck permits are good for one location only, but one individual food truck could have, could hold multiple permits. So, for example, if they wanted a permit, you know, one location and show up there on Monday, they could do that and have, hold another permit to be in a different location for Tuesday, but those would be two separate permits for those two individual locations. So, that's sort of a summary of those changes, we're asking for you all to consider those changes and make any recommendations for changes in taking this on to the city council.
Okay. Thanks. If we have any questions, we'll bring you back up. Our, my issue, okay, that's correct. Is there anyone from the public here to speak to this item?
Good evening. My name's Nancy Paymore, two representative. Thank you for taking the time to hear this tonight. Now, I tried to get some food vendors to come out here so you guys could see them, but the ones that are open on Monday said that they were either too busy to come down here to City Hall, or they were in Bentonville, so I couldn't get anybody to come to City Hall in Fayetteville tonight on Monday. I guess it's, in August, we crossed the two-year point of talking about this. It started back then with a group of business owners, mostly restaurants, that asked me to come to a meeting at the Little Bread Company to discuss changes that we might be able to make to the ordinance to help them get into business. And I'm sad it's taken so long, but I think we've done a lot of due diligence to get us to this point, we've had many iterations. That culminated in just about three months ago, when this was placed on your agenda with the approval of the mayor, he had signed off on this after staff's work, and then it got pulled, planning staff took another look at it and had some administrative concerns and so wanted to make some adjustments, and they've done that, and that's where we are today. So, I was pretty involved with the first of that process and most of the drafting meetings, and in the last three months, most changes I haven't been very much involved at all, but I've kept up with it. I know that at least one of the commissioners has made some exciting comments in the paper in the past meetings, but I don't want to take those on directly unless I'm invited back up to ask and ask to do that. I'd rather focus my comments on the mechanics of this and talk a little bit about the opportunity, but certainly, you know, having been involved with this for quite some time, I'm more than willing, perhaps even excited to talk about some of the economic and political underpinnings that I think make this a good idea. Let's see. So, I guess I'll just keep my comments unless you call me back up to do that, or ask me to do that, to the opportunities that I think are very apparent. You know, I can't think of any example where somebody's been put out of business because a food truck opened, or a mobile vendor, or a trailer, or a sidewalk vendor, but I can't think of a lot of examples where somebody was able to get into the game because they had that opportunity. Just to name a few that have gone on to open brick-and-mortar stores, just in Fayetteville, we have Pigment, a flower shop, Gray Barn, a clothing resale store, and Hawaiian Brian's Restaurant, which even though they seem to be in a location that has been traditionally difficult for other restaurants, seem to be making a pretty good go of it, so I'm encouraged by that. Fayetteville businesses that have opened food trucks, Greenhouse Grill, unfortunately, they don't do food truck business in Fayetteville, they do their food truck business in Bentonville because Bentonville's ordinance allows them to do so. Ham and Trees, the Gorlinian Falcon, operated for some time at the Best Buy parking lot, but like Greenhouse Grill, they're now also in Bentonville. Feltners, Feltners Brothers is about to open a food truck, if we can get this ordinance passed, they'll open it in Fayetteville. That will be a traditional food truck, not a food trailer, from going from location to location if they're able to do that. These are just a few of the names that we might recognize. I get calls about once every two months or so from individuals who would love to open a business and want my advice on how to do that. The best I've been able to tell them is to talk to planning staff, which is shoehorning them into the current ordinance. They're gonna run the risk of not being able to operate after ninety days, but they'll have a chance to make their case, and that will work really hard on getting the law changed to allow them to have a guarantee that they can be in business for at least an entire year. With most of all businesses failing within the first sixty months, I think it's critical, if we're going to open the door to people that want to start these kinds of business here, businesses here, that we change the law somehow. There's another opportunity here, which is, what I think is, you know, I, let me back up, I'm a land use guy, so what I think about the majority of my waking hours is how can we change the land use patterns of our communities so that they're better for the people that live here? And the biggest impediment, or the biggest thing wrong with some of our land uses vacant lots. They build a beautiful community, but vacant lots, I use the analogy, they're like missing teeth on an otherwise perfect face. They detract from the experience of Fayetteville, whether you're a pedestrian, or a driver, or a cyclist, or someone that just lives in the neighborhood. And I think what an ordinance like this will allow to happen is to, for lack of a better word, activate those vacant lots. We don't collect much tax revenue at all on a vacant lot, certainly no sales tax and very little property tax. But if there is something on that vacant lot, whether that's a building or a business, we get to collect more revenue for it. That's just our benefit. I think there's a larger cultural benefit that goes with activating those vacant lots. You know, they provide a place for people to congregate, for social interaction to take place, for cohesion to build. And I think what happens when those lots get activated is you start to see interest from people with more capital invest, to invest. I know that the owner of the Yacht Club is saving most of the revenue from that to reinvest on the property. One of the things that I think is absolutely important that has been in this from the beginning is, if this gets passed, the planning commission is granted the authority to acquire site improvements if we allow, if we are to allow semi-permanent installations of food courts, which I think is absolutely necessary, I think fair is fair, to be able to do that. But again, in that broader perspective, when you look at a scenario like Nomad Natural Plate, which every Wednesday night at Fossil Cove Brewery's trivia night parks outside of their parking lot, and they serve food to customers that otherwise wouldn't have access to that food, they either have to leave the site or order delivery, you have an immediate benefit, but you also have a market incentive for somebody to come in and make, it doesn't get rid of all the risk, but make a safer investment, capital improvement to put a restaurant there, or another kind of establishment. It's that kind of synergy that keeps most, or the lack of that kind of synergy that keeps most investments of this nature from being made. There's just too much risk involved, but if you can see that somebody's already made a go of it and has been successful at that attempt, someone who wants to make that kind of real estate investment is able to show that the risk has been reduced. You know, that's exactly the point. That's my point, that's my motivation. I want to see these lots get food trucks and food trailers put on them, and then I want to see those turn into buildings with housing and retail and eating establishments. I want to see all that happen on these vacant lots. And it's no coincidence that when you look at a place like the Yacht Club, which is on, which is on what should be a very active corner of our community, on our most active arterial, next to one of our most cherished parks, on a row, on a corner lot that, it's not just an arterial, it's one of the main entryways to that park, it should not be vacant. There's not really an explanation for why it is vacant, but the fact that it's active now means that we've shown that things could survive there, and that's getting us one step closer to seeing investments being made in vacant lots like that. Well, I said I want to focus on the opportunities and not really drill into disagreements I might have with the philosophy of Commissioner Hoskins about why this is originally a good idea, so I think that the opportunity is obvious there, you know, just based on the examples I've stated tonight. And you have to ask yourself, if you can't come up with an example where a business has been put out of business by a food trailer, how many examples can you come up with people who have been able to start a business because they just had that opportunity? So, if you have any, any questions whatsoever, thank you for your time.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? Ma'am, I believe you. Try to come up and state your name for us, please.
Cynthia Morris from the Yacht Club, and I just, first of all, want to say, I think this would really help out a lot of our vendors, and it would help you as the city planning commission, because with our people coming up every ninety days, it takes up a lot of your valuable time. Back in December, I only had one trailer there, so, I mean, we've had some real lean times there in the, a couple, well, it hasn't been quite two years, but right now I have six mobile vendors on the lot, which I do feel is capacity, and that's six people that could be coming up before you and every ninety days, and I do feel like that takes up a lot of your time. The businesses could use more than ninety days, because in ninety days, it's really harder usually, a one or two-person business, to do all their marketing, accounting, get a small business started from scratch, and they've really got to hit the ground running to get things going in ninety days, and know if they're gonna be a success, fill out the forms and continue. And as has just been pointed out, I do feel really good that we have filled three empty buildings in the city because people were given a chance, so I do appreciate this, and I feel like that you've worked very well with it, and this new, well, I don't know what to call it, law, whatever, could be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Aubrey Shepherd. Well, I certainly agree that any paved previously, any lots that previously had a, primarily pavement and had a building on it, certainly should be allowed to use this. I also think that this would be a desirable way to use some unpaved lots, just a grass parcel, because the critical thing that I stress is keeping the natural soil so that the water's absorbed, it doesn't rush down, it's not piped directly to a stream, it doesn't send any sediment to our, or any street runoff with oil and so forth. So, I certainly don't agree that every lot should be filled. The bigger the lots, the better, the more, if they're on natural prairie soil particularly. If they're on a steep slope, it's even worse, in a different way, it goes on the surface out there. So, I'm all for allowing these vendors, because I love using them. It's not, not saying I won't come get ice cream from Mr. Hoskins' place now and then, but according to reality, I've got there now. But the, the outdoor, easy to drive to and convenient to take home places, some of them have great food, and it doesn't keep me from going to restaurants, it allows me to have a restaurant-type meal quickly and easily, and not have to dress for it or any of the things that are required, or we feel are required by the places. So, thank you for supporting this.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Sherri Henry, and I hope to be a future food truck owner. I currently have the capital to invest, and I'm looking to move this adventure to Bentonville. I am from Fayetteville, I want to operate here in Fayetteville, I believe in the community. Currently, food trucks are a six-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar industry, and they're expected, it's expected by two thousand and fourteen to be a two-point-six-billion-dollar industry. It is something that brings the community together, it is something that Fayetteville currently doesn't have. We often talk about that we want to be, or people do say, we're a mini Austin, or we're like Eugene, Oregon, or we're like Lawrence, Kansas, and we're not. I'm hoping that you guys will take into consideration the portion of the ordinance that would allow food trucks to move around daily in order to go to that location where the consumer is. The other aspect of it is, for the rest of the ordinance, for the permits to be more than ninety days, it does take more than ninety-eight days to get this off the ground. I've been getting this off the ground for about three months. I am ready to pull the trigger, and it is your call of whether or not I'm gonna do that in Bentonville or in Fayetteville. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Saying done, I'll bring you back to the commission.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Commissioner Chesser.
I have a few questions to start with, just about some of the language, some of the logistics, so I guess, Mr. Nierengarten, I'll address those to you, and I don't care if nobody else, the chair doesn't care, I don't care if you use that mic right there, I don't know what the chair would prefer, since you're a city staff member, I think that's your duty. Since you're a city staff member, I think that's your deal.
Do you have a better answer? I may have to, to fall for some guidance for this issue.
That's fine. First thing I want to ask is, I know, I understand the reasoning between, behind asking the vendor to determine what businesses are around. What's your plan to check them on that? I mean, how do you know they'll be honest, I guess, is my first question? And how will you resolve whether or not they're honest without legwork on your own ultimately?
It's a great question. I suspect that a lot of these are going to be in locations that many of us are already familiar with, and so if someone brings forward a, you know, proposed location, and they've got obvious gaps in restaurants, they're probably going to be called out on it in front of you all. And my guess is that you're probably not going to look favorably upon that, and that will set a quick precedent to encourage the mobile vendors to be forthright and exhaustive in their presentation of the nearby similar businesses, and that that'll be fairly self-policing.
Okay. I suspect you're right, that if we, I guess, I suspect that we would not look favorably if we found out that that was true, and I suppose the maximum damage is the year permit, which I doubt would be renewed. Do we have a, would we have a recourse, Mr. Garner, if, could we, could we then withdraw that permit if we found out that such a thing had occurred, if we changed our mind, or are we stuck with the year permit under this ordinance?
That's a difficult question. I would think it would, you know, if that comes, it would have to be some sort of complaint, I guess, like if a nearby business complained, I guess, that said, hey, I sell ham murders and, you know, something like that. No, I think that would be very difficult to bring back, and I mean, I think you potentially could bring it back to the commission if there was a complaint, that their application was inaccurate, and staff would potentially talk to that vendor and say, hey, your application is being challenged, we're going to bring this back to the commission for a rehearing.
Okay. I'm satisfied with that.
I would note, if you look on the very last section, it talks about revocation of the permit, and it's authorizing the Zoning and Development Administrator to revoke it if it's in violation of Unified Development Code. And it also says, if you look at number H, it says the food trucks may be permitted administratively on an annual basis for multiple locations, subject to the following determinations made by the Zoning and Development Administrator. So it's not the food truck operators making these determinations, it is the Zoning and Development Administrator, who in this case is Jeremy, and he's looking at all these different requirements. Now, he can require evidence from the food truck operator, or something like that, to help make his determination, but he's making the determination, not the food truck.
No, I understand that, but if you're relying upon evidence from the food truck...
But he doesn't have to. I mean, I'm saying he can.
I understand. It was just a question. It's the first thing that I would think of, well, like, how does it lower your workload if you have to double-check them? So, but as long as there's a recourse, I think that that's fine, and I suspect that complaint-driven would work in that case. So I'm satisfied with that. You have an item under food trucks, which says, "The food trucks shall not match or duplicate the primary food or beverage offering sold by permanent businesses located on property immediately adjacent, et cetera, et cetera." My question is, how is primary determined, and who determines that? Is that up to us as a commission? And while I reckon, let me say that, I've thought about what this kind of ordinance would look like quite a bit, and I appreciate the, I'm not pouring water over your efforts here, I'm just sounding them out at this point. But I, as a commissioner who's, you know, tended to be on one side of this issue, but, you know, wondered, you know, how, there are, there's a lot of gray for us to determine, and that's, that's a lot of work for us, frankly. Not far from our job, but...
This will not be your administration, or your determination, this will be a determination made by the Zoning and Development Administrator under section H, and he, that's one of the determinations that the Zoning and Development Administrator will make, not the Planning Commission. These will not come back before you.
How will he make that determination?
I guess by looking at the particular evidence. This is a very, this is not nearly as large of a scale to look at, because they talk about property immediately adjacent, that's pretty close to a budding, so you all look for a much wider area.
Sure.
And he will not. And I do agree that where it says the primary food shall not match or duplicate, which is, that's extremely narrow, so if they have almost anything else besides what somebody is presenting right next to them, otherwise, I think, so I don't think that he's going to very often turn it down to that, but it will not be a consideration from you all, this will be done administratively by the Zoning and Development Administrator.
Okay.
And I think the goal here is to keep, you know, the Feldman Brothers was thrown out as an opening up a food truck, it's to keep them from rolling out their food truck and parking in front of, you know, a competitor's burger establishment, or in a lot right next to a competitor's burger establishment. But if someone wanted to set up next to the burger establishment and sell tacos, but also offer, you know, Coca-Cola to drink, and the burger establishment happens to have Coca-Cola, well, that wouldn't be considered competing interests, just because they both offered Coca-Cola. But since their primary food offerings were different, then it wouldn't meet the intent of ordinance.
Sure. I, I understand the intent, I predict some difficult decision-making, but that's fine. Here's another question, food truck permits, oh, sorry, well, I'll go with this one for now. Food truck permits are good for one location over, however food trucks may hold permits for multiple locations. I'm imagining a situation in which the food truck rotates on a daily or hourly basis to various locations based on demand, and those locations were predetermined by the food truck getting a permit for those several locations, if I got that correct.
Yeah, our assumption is that what we would, would see would be food trucks permitted, you know, they may hold up to five permits and go to, you know, one location every Monday, a different location every Tuesday, and the trend seems to be creating a, a sort of a following for that truck in a particular location on a particular day of the week.
But they could rotate at their discretion, right? Wouldn't have to be day.
Yeah, it wouldn't have to adhere to any, any particular day.
So here's the part where I want to, I'm just curious what happens in this case. This is for private lots, right?
Yeah.
I'm actually thinking of some movie I watched recently, in which there were some food trucks, they were part of the lot, and these, these food trucks I thought were parking light, the analogy for me would be if they parked in the large parking area of Wilson Park, which I would actually support.
In the parking lot?
Yeah, that sort of long, narrow parking lot.
So that would not, they would not...
There's no private location there. Are they allowed to just do that under current ordinance?
Not, it's not, it's my understanding, no, they would not be allowed, nor would they be allowed under this ordinance.
So how's the ice cream vendor do that?
You know, we currently don't really address those types of vendors in our ordinances. I think for the most part, you know, the ice cream, some cities around here do specifically address ice cream vendors and things like that, like Springdale, for example, does, and they, when you, they have a permit process, you have to get a background check, you know, things like that, before you can even do that. I think our philosophy in Fayetteville has been for like the ice cream trucks, as long as they're not breaking traffic laws, as far as parking, driving around town, you know, stopping where they shouldn't stop, they have generally been, you know, allowed to continue their business.
Well, I kind of think you mistake me, because I actually would support the possibility of a food truck parking in that kind of a location, in the same way that an ice cream vendor is allowed to, or parking, what happens if the food, can a food truck park on a public street in a public parking space facing onto a sidewalk, and then, is that legal, Karen? No. So that would be a part where, I guess I wish the code could be amended a little further, because I feel like limiting them to private lots only is a little overly limiting, frankly. I, I think that that's an oversight. Last question is this, let's say we've got the Yacht Club, since it's a, it's a retiring player to this show often. An established mobile vendor is in the Yacht Club. Then a brick-and-mortar store opens adjacent and begins selling one of the primary food items of the mobile vendor. Can the, does the mobile vendor have recourse, or it, under your ordinance, to me, I would read that the mobile vendor must pick up and move then, which I think is completely unfair. So I'm wondering, how do, how do you address that? I think the upshot of where I'm going here is, generally, I've been in support of a change to mobile vending permits for quite some time. I wonder if, I suspect several other questions are going to come up. I would probably typically be the person that would say, yeah, I want to forward this. Probably tonight, just as a warning, I'm probably going to say, I might want to think about it, table it. And that's one of the things I want to ask about, I mean, what do you do in that, what do you do about public streets where I actually think mobile vendors should be allowed? What do you do about that kind of situation where it might be unfair to the mobile vendor in that case? You don't necessarily have to answer that one right now, which is already thought, I see some nodding back there, so I wonder if this got kicked around a little bit?
Well, Commissioner Chester, I can guarantee you that was not an oversight, this has been studied very carefully by the Planning Department and Alderman Petty, and I think that at this point in time, they want to go forward with this part of the ordinance, rather than attacking other issues which are more difficult. Is that not right, Jesse? I mean, we looked at that issue...
But I'm, I'm talking about a specific part of this ordinance right now.
You're talking about something that's not in here.
Right. Well, the, the street stuff, sure, I'm bringing that up as a thing I would like them to address later. But the primary food item is definitely in this ordinance right now, and I'm asking you to address that one.
Yeah, I can answer that piece for you, Commissioner Chester.
Thanks.
The, matching the primary food and beverage offering of the business next door is only in the food truck piece, it's not part of the mobile vendor.
So what happens if the food truck's got a beat?
Yeah, so it may...
If somebody opens a business next door?
Right, I think that could be an unfortunate circumstance for that actual food truck. But the food truck, I mean, he's, he's mobile, he's leaving every night, he doesn't have a whole lot invested in that site, except for potentially his following, and maybe, and all he would have to do is move one additional lot over, that could be a potential solution. For the mobile vendors, I think that you all would, you know, that new business opens up next door to the, to the location where the mobile vendors have located, they've invested a little bit more in their site than the food truck. That's going to be for, that, that new business location is going to be submitted by that applicant when they're applying for their next annual permit, that'll be for you all to consider when reviewing that, that annual...
Well, I, I guess I feel like you're selling the food truck a little short in that, in that instance, but that, again, I'm not pouring water on this, I'm very glad that you've been addressing this issue. I, in essence, agree with the direction you're going. I don't think it should be said that if a brick-and-mortar opens next door to where a food truck already has a permit, I think there should be a timing issue at that point. I don't know why the food truck shouldn't have precedence in that case, I don't know why a new established brick-and-mortar suddenly can run a food truck off its speed. So that, I have, you know, I don't know if that's a major issue here, but I think it's something to be considered. And with that, I will leave the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to hold the floor that long.
Yeah, if we could keep our comments pertinent and short, and otherwise we could be in some midnight, and I really don't want to... Mr. Ross?
Couple of questions. Actually, I've been looking forward for this to come through for quite some time. Unfortunately, after reading this, it went the other direction than what I expected. As a matter of, of history, okay, I have never been anti-mobile vendor or what I did. In fact, I said a long, long time ago, why didn't this ordinance include food trucks? Okay, and so, but I got a few questions for you. Currently, we have a ninety-day process, and an applicant can come back and get a permit, they can come to the Planning Commission and get a permit for up to a year, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, has any of those ever been denied?
No.
Never, okay. We currently have a distance of one half-mile, you know, you, I'll say your, whatever, your time limit or wherever, you've got to move a half-mile down the road. Of all the vendors that have ever set up in Fayetteville, how many have actually moved, had to move?
None.
None, okay, that's what I thought, too. Okay, as far as, in this new ordinance, I noticed that one of the things that we haven't talked about is the language has been removed of selling similar products to other businesses. That language has absolutely been stricken out of here, best I can tell. In other words, I think in the, in the old ordinance, it said, and, and I don't have it in front of me, so I'm going to kind of, it was creating unfair advantage to existing businesses. In other words, whenever an applicant came in and filled out an application, they had to list on there exactly what they were selling, or what they were serving, or what have you. And the reason for that was for staff to determine if they were selling like kind of products of people that were in very close proximity, brick-and-mortar businesses in close proximity. Is that correct?
I don't see on here where we require them to list out their, what they were offering, correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse or Andrew, in terms of their menu.
Yeah, on, in the application, as a matter of fact, the initial application comes with the same criteria as the variance application, at least in, under the existing ordinance or what have you. In fact, I think the city attorney actually added that language to the old ordinance after it was crafted right before approval, if I remember correctly. Maybe the city attorney can chime in on that.
I worked with planning on trying to get some language so that you all would have more of a test to, to follow when the application was presented to you.
Okay. So, so with that, of course, you know, in, in my record on the Planning Commission, I'm not, I'm not anti-mobile vendor at all, or transit vendor or what have you. What I am anti is whenever a temporary business does not have to, when a, when a mobile business, a temporary business becomes a perennial business, a reoccurring, and, and even with the, the ability to get a one-year permit as the ordinance stands right now, they could virtually become a permanent business, all they've got to do is convince this panel up here that they should be there. And so my issue is, is we have businesses in this town that invested tens, hundreds, thousands of dollars, millions of dollars, or what have you, in, in abiding by the regulations, commercial design standards, health department standards, ADA facilities, public restaurants for their, for their patrons, place for them to wash their hands, et cetera, et cetera. Permanent businesses have to comply with all that, whereas the mobile vendors, you know, if it's on a very temporary basis, it's not a big deal. But once it becomes an annual business, as what we've got here, then it becomes a little bit more of a deal. It's kind of, to me, it's kind of a slap in the face of the permanent, of the permanent businesses in town. But with that being said, one of the issues that I've got with the way this is written is, I'm glad that we've added the food trucks, we should have had them to begin with, or what have you. I don't really understand why the food truck has to, they can't duplicate the products of the people next door, yet the people in the, in the temporary shacks or whatever, that doesn't apply to them, I don't really understand that. I mean, it seems like it would apply to either one. I also don't understand really why, if we have a mobile vendor ordinance, or transit vendor ordinance or whatever, where they can set up in places like the Yacht Club, or some other parking lot in town, and now be able to be there for a year, and year after year after year after year, I don't understand why the mobile truck, why the thing that has an engine and wheels has to move every night, I don't, I don't get it, really. It seems to me like the, the ordinance should be, I mean, that it should almost mirror image each other, it seems like, and so I don't really understand that part of it. As far as the ninety-day, I mean, I've, to me, going from half... As far as the ninety day, I mean, I've, to me, going from half of a mile to one quarter mile, especially when nobody's had to move in this town, seems a little bit arbitrary to me. The going from ninety days to, to six months on the initial permit doesn't sound good to me either to apply to, to, no matter who it is or what they do, or what they sell, or what they serve, or whatever. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. While I understand that, that some businesses need more time than that, need more than ninety days to get started and see if it's going to work or whatever, well, we have a process now where they can come in and get all the way up to a year, you know? And so, and with this, we're saying, we're drawing the line in the sand that all these annual permits, they're going to expire at three o'clock on, on January first. So they're all back in here anyway annually. And so, I don't really see the difference there. As far as if, if it's for the sake of taking whatever issues or taking, reducing the number of items that the planning commission has to look at or what have you, well, we all signed up for this, and so, so they can bring five hundred, five hundred of them in here a month, and, and I won't feel any inconvenience, because that's what I signed up for. Anyway, I hope that we do not pass this thing tonight. To me, it, it seems to me like there's, it needs a lot of work. In fact, I had a whole, whole list of things that I was going to go over, but I'm not going to tonight or what have you. But again, I, I don't, I don't understand why there are some regulations for the guy who's got wheels, wheels and engine, but those regulations don't apply to those who don't have wheels and engine. And, you know, like movement truck every night doesn't make a lot, a lot of sense to me. Either you're going to allow them to be there, or you're not going to allow them to be there. And, and then I think that, you know, I've got a question for you. We're taking the responsibility off of staff to list the surrounding restaurants, or florists, or whatever the case may be, and what they sell, or what they serve, or what have you. We're taking that responsibility off of staff and putting it on the applicant. Okay? The question is, is if we are basically removing, for all intents and purposes, the, the language of, of, well, I guess it does still apply to the guy with the wheels and the tires, I guess. I, I guess I don't understand why they need to turn that in at all. If, if it no longer matters, or what am I not getting here? In other words, if it no longer matters that they're selling similar, similar or identical products or what have you, why make them, why make it go to the exercise at all?
Well, I think that it's been shown that there's an interest from, from you all in knowing what is adjacent to where these mobile vendors are locating. And so, you know, before, we had, and planning staff could, could speak to this better than I can, because they're the ones that actually have to do the work, but they've gone through painstaking detail to research, find out what these nearby restaurants or competing businesses may be, what their menus look like, comparing prices of various items. And, and it takes up a great deal of staff time. You know, at the same time, they're experiencing a greater number of other development projects coming in the door. And I think that they've just recognized that, that the amount of work going into making this binding and standing in front of you all and, and making a recommendation with a straight face is a great deal of effort.
Let, let me re-ask my question, because I don't, on the, on the mobile trucks or what have you, you're asking them to, they can't be parking adjacent to other property where, you know, this mobile guy selling tacos can't park on the property next door to the taco shack or what have you. Okay, I understand why you're doing it there. Okay? On the businesses where they're operating out of a, whatever, a temporary shack, or an airstream, or what have you, okay? This same thing does not apply to those, those folks. Is that correct?
It would be up to you all to make that determination.
I'm talking about as you've written this now. It would not, it would not apply to those folks.
If, if, if a taco trailer wanted to locate next to the taco shack, and they came in in front of you all and asked for an annual permit, then you all could either approve or deny that based on the fact that that taco shack is next door to where the taco trailer wants to locate.
Okay. I guess what I'm getting at is, let's say we've got a barbecue restaurant, okay, and there's a vacant spot next door, okay? A food truck pulls up there, and we're going to say, no, no, you can't do that. You can't sell barbecue next door. However, in the lot next door, they could put up a airstream or what have you, and they can sell barbecue just five, no problem for six months. At least six months.
They could, yes.
Yeah. Okay, so basically, we are deleting that out of, out of the code then? The current code?
I think that's a, yeah, I think that's a fair, a fair statement.
All right. That's, that's the way I read it, or what I, I just wanted to make sure I was correct about it. And to me, that's, those are the issues that I have. In the current language of the code, it is, you know, this panel is, is obligated to determine, well, are they similar products, are they different, or whatever, et cetera, et cetera? You know, I heard an argument one time, well, our flowers are prettier than their flowers. Well, okay, maybe they are, maybe they're not, I don't know. Okay? But it was one of those, really, have we, is this where we've gotten with this? And, or we put our flowers together differently than others? Okay, great. And so, that's, that's kind of my issue with this, is because before, in the old language, we had really no litmus test. It was a matter of nine folks' opinion, whether they were same or different, or, or what have you. And now, that litmus test doesn't exist at all. And so, and so, the very thing that, the issue that I had with it before, well, you're right, I'm not going to have any issues with it now, because now it doesn't even matter anymore. And so, in my opinion, we just took this thing to another level of an unfair advantage against the folks who invested hundreds of thousands of dollars setting up a business in this town. And unless we can address that or whatever, there's no way I can support this. Not, I don't know that it's going to really matter that much, but, but anyhow, I sure think we need to look at, at this and, you know, what we put our permanent brick and mortar businesses through to set up shop in this town, or what have you, and, and then basically tossing all that, I mean, we're all the way down to commercial design standards in this town, how many trees we're going to put in our parking lot, our parking lot, the spacing of those trees, what have you, bonding, bonding for trees, or what have you, where in other cases, we're not even going to require those trees at all. And so, you know, a comment was made earlier about, you know, folks set up these, these pods, you know, such as the yacht club, or what have you, where, I think the, the statement that was made is, the owner is, you know, putting all the money back into the, the property or what have you. Well, that's great. So hopefully, maybe we'll see some of the, the required sidewalks along North College, or the required landscaping, or some permanent restroom facilities. I mean, obviously, it's a business model they like, it's an ongoing concern, and it will be for some time, and I think it's a great deal. What, the issue that I have with it is that, you know, if I'm going to go eat at one of those little restaurants out there, where am I going to wash my hands? Where am I going to take my kid to use the bathroom? If you look at other, other communities that do these things, or whatever, they're not, it's not a free-for-all all over town. Okay? It's, they have, for the most part, or whatever, they have very controlled facilities, such as the yacht club, you know, that these types of businesses are grouped into areas. And if you look in those areas, those, there's permanent restroom facilities built on those areas. You know, and so, you know, that's my deal, is, is, I think it's a great idea, I think we ought to do the mobile vendor thing in this town, I think we ought to do the food truck thing in this town, but I think that there should be more regulation to it. In other words, if this is going to be a growing concern for the yacht club, and I think it's a great deal, then the yacht club should try to bring their facilities, I mean, it's obviously a business, it's obviously a money-making business, which is great. Okay? So, like, those who have to invest in their buildings and their properties, or whatever, you know, if we're going to have these pods, they need to do the same.
Thanks. Commissioner, Commissioner, if I may?
Sure.
Would it be safe to say that we could get, we could get support for, for this ordinance with a recommended amendment, I guess if you will, that the outdoor mobile vendors locating on private property on a temporary basis had to meet a similar requirement to the food trucks in terms of not offering a similar primary food or beverage offering to what is immediately adjacent to that property? Would that be acceptable to the commission?
The only concern I have, if we progress in this manner, is that this is, this is just one statement. You have yet to get through, basically, seven other people up here. And if we go through this step by step with specified language, I, I think, I think at best, it might be another note-taking night tonight. In, in all reality, I have concerns. You know, I'm, I'm all for the mobile vendor thing, I have absolutely no problem with it, but there are concerns that I have. But I don't know if we want to get into a situation where, where writing specific language by the paragraph tonight to suit, you know, possibly ten, twenty, thirty, forty questions. I don't, you know, I don't know if we want to get into that, into that realm. I don't know if the staff has any of that.
We may recommend just for, to keep the floor open to the commissioners, to let all the comments get out here, any major issues with it, and then, you know, let Peter and his staff, you know, consider whether we want to.
If you'd be comfortable with just writing down, and I'm not saying a response or a retort by any means, you know, just write down language that you feel that we could amend, that, that would kind of streamline the process.
Sure.
You know, I'm not trying to rush us out the door or anything like that, but I just, I don't know if we want to get into just a drawn-out conversation where nobody is really keeping score, other than Andrew keeping up with, and just a lot of back and forth. I think it would be a lot more productive if, if we, if you come up with a, something that maybe towards the end, you know, address the questions, and we just do it that way. I don't know. I'd be curious to hear, have input from, from everybody. So, if, if that's reasonable to you, that's, I'd like to, to approach it that way.
Sure.
Please. Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
I'd like to highly commend the staff for all the research and the hard work that's done on this, Mr. Near Garden. And the yacht club has been a perfect scenario of how this model can work. It's generated at least three new businesses that have gone on and become brick and mortar businesses. We have a lady back here who's getting ready to make a decision between our neighbors to the north and the city of Fayetteville. And I, for one, in all due respect to our neighbors to the north, I want to keep businesses here. This is a great model. I don't want her, or any other business, Felder Brothers, to head up north, when we can have that revenue generated and stay in the city of Fayetteville. They, at the yacht club, for example, they've done everything that we've asked them to as far as landscaping. There was a situation where somebody had a bisque wing awning out there, you know, we were afraid it was going to end up in college or somewhere boring down the road. That has been rectified. Those trailers now have to have a type of awning that goes more along with the design of the trailers, which is great. Like I said, the city has bent over backwards for everything that we've asked. Granted, this may not solve every single issue, and I know there will be additional issues that will come up regarding mobile vendors, truck vendors, et cetera, et cetera. I've eaten several of these, the products are great, Nomads is great. Eric, that gentleman, he doesn't mind going and parking every night and, and having relocate from where he ever, wherever he's been in at that particular location. So, I would highly recommend it, if, if we can get everything solved tonight, that we bring it to a vote and, and get it done, if we can all have some type of agreement. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
Well, as is often the case, I'm going to play devil's advocate, Commissioner Hostman. I'm actually glad that the language of comparison has been stripped, because I actually think the market should decide this case. I don't want to have to decide what is comparable, and I'm not sure that, we wouldn't stop another brick and mortar business from locating next to a brick and mortar business. I've seen a grocery store open across the street from another grocery store. I feel like there are, I always had some problem with the language of unfair advantage, because to me, that's a very difficult thing to quantify. I'm not convinced that, that simply lower overhead of a mobile vendor necessary, necessarily is an unfair advantage. I think that the brick and mortar store has its own inherent advantages. For example, an interior space, climate control, things like that. So I'm not, I was never convinced that merely having lower overhead operating expenditures was inherently an unfair advantage. I think that some of the design standards, I see where Commissioner Hostman's coming from on the design standards, actually. On the flip side, I'd be more interested in having those types of design standards on buildings that are of a more permanent nature, that we're kind of going to be stuck with for a long time. So, so design standards on brick and mortar buildings make sense to me because they're more permanent, so they are a more lasting impression on the community, so that I'm not sure that those types, same types of standards would be appropriate for a temporary business. On the other hand, I do see your point about bathrooms and things like that. It seems problematic if some businesses can just not provide some amenities that are expensive in terms of plumbing and things like that. And I feel like something, I think there's a point there, I'm not sure what to do to address it. So, I guess I just wanted to sort of pick out the opposite side of it, because I think we're on, we come at this from different directions. I've never been comfortable trying to, trying to determine, sitting in this chamber, what constituted an unfair advantage. I mean, is making a better product an unfair advantage, like in the case of the flowers, for example? I don't, I have no idea how to determine that, and that's difficult for me. So, you know, I pointed out some issues that I have, which I would like to see addressed. I would like to ask Alderman Petty a question, if I may. The city attorney seems to be representing that there's a timeframe that you're trying to get to, like you want to sort of pass this immediately. At least I thought that's what he was indicating.
I want the opponent of this ordinance to speak for himself.
I'm wondering how you feel about tabling to discuss some things. There's obviously some issues. Is there any reason that it needs to be forwarded tonight, in your mind, or is a tabling acceptable to discuss some of the issues that've come up? And others which may still?
That's a good question. I do think there is some pressure from the marketplace to get this passed sooner rather than later, but I've characterized that as mild pressure. Many of the issues that you brought up are issues that we struggled with, and to be quite honest, in not so many words, I think staff and I settled on making the compromises that you find in the ordinance tonight, based on political considerations from what we've seen, said at public meetings in the past. And I characterize the pressure as mild, I would characterize those compromises as unsavory from my perspective. I think that, in light of your concerns, I'm going to give the nail on the head. Government shouldn't be in the business of picking the winners and losers between competitors who sell certain product. I don't think we can adequately find unfair advantages unless we want to dig into tax rules. And even then, we haven't been able to find one in the past, and it would be difficult to find one in the future. But more than that, you know, the discrepancies between the food trucks and, and the mobile vendors, I think those should be rectified. I think they should be rectified in the direction that you put forward. I think the challenge for us, we're happy to take the time and try and rectify those things, but we need direction from more than two or three of you to be able to figure out what's going to come out of this committee. We're aware this is only the first sausage grinder, it's probably going to go through the same thing in the council, perhaps even in subcommittee with ordinance review. So, you know, even though I would prefer an ordinance that doesn't talk anything about unfair advantages, that sells public permits, operate in parks and public parking spaces with a lottery, I'm not sure that we have the consensus to do that, and I'm an inc- with a lottery, I'm not sure that we have the consensus to do that, and I'm an incrementalist at heart, because I'm practical, and if this is good enough to the majority of the commission, I'd ask that, you know, we say it's good enough for now, and expect to see changes in six months to a year, because that's typically what's gonna happen, I think.
So I'm, so my question to you then is, you haven't gotten here from much of this council, I'm happy to recommend forwarding. Are you willing to roll the dice in this case? You want me to make that recommendation? Would you prefer that tonight?
I would say yes, I would prefer to hear from the rest of the council before being, before being asked that question.
They've been strangely silent.
But I, I, well, I've sat with, I've sat with at least one of them before, he's always been swatting around for me too. Wait, no, I would say...
Alderman, it's been represented to me that I've been dominating the floor, and that's been the problem, so maybe both of us should, should be quiet for a minute and see what the rest of the commission has to say, if that would be all right with you. You have to yield the floor and shut up unless I'm making a motion from here on out. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Please, go ahead.
I'll keep my comments brief, I support the crux of what you attempted to do here. I think, I look forward to seeing the changes in the future, expansions and all that. Like Mr. Chester, I think there should be some protection for existing permit holders who, you know, have a following at a specific location. If they have a permit for the six months or the one year, and a brick and mortar business comes in right next door, I think they should have the protection to stay there through the end of their permitted period and not have it revoked. That's the only change I could think of.
And I don't think, if I, if I may?
Sure.
Chair, I don't think that anything in here would necessarily require that permit to be revoked. I think when it would become an issue is when they attempted to re-up for that same location at the, at the end of, when that permit expired, then they would probably, then they would have to relocate to a, to the next, next lot over.
Okay, let's all have, okay.
Mr. Chair. I support this ordinance. I, I also agree with Commissioner Hoskins about treating the mobile vendors and the trucks the same way as far as, as far as needing to state what it is that they're serving, and, and not having them serving the same thing as building right next door. It just makes sense to me that they would be treated the same way. But I'd be willing to vote for forwarding tonight, recommendation for approval.
Well, I'm thinking about it, if I may, Peter, you, you had mentioned that you were in, you were interested in entering some conversation or amendments to how the ordinance is currently written, and I, I am surprised, there's not a lot of rebuttal about a lot of anything. So if you wanted to go ahead and read, I guess, I think you were trying to address what Commissioner Hoskins, and you started to say, if we, if I could enter this language into, and I kind of shut it down, I didn't, do you remember what you wanted to put in there?
Yeah, what I was gonna address was his, his concern that the temporary permit for the outdoor mobile vendor have a similar requirement, that it not offer food, primary food or beverage to a business on an adjoining lot, similar to what's in the sidewalk vendor piece. I think if you all wanted to offer that as an amendment, we can certainly present that to the city council.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Well, let's, let me, I, I'm just gonna run through my stuff real quick. The design standards, you know, to me, the biggest problem that I have is that you're looking at a mobile vendor, and then it's, we, we permit them in for six months, and then we give them a year. And then it's unlimited, year after year after year after year. Now, to what Commissioner Chester said, as far as the, the design standards, you know, a brick and mortar is more permanent, I can probably tell you what almost every single mobile vendor building looks like that I drive through on a daily basis, because I've seen them, year after year after year after year. And they're all square, they all have a slight roof, and they're all basically one color. You know, and that, and that's what I mean, is that there, there's no finality to the way that this is written. I don't have a problem, the yacht club, great idea, great business model. The thing that scares me is that every single vacant lot is suddenly gonna fill up with food trucks and mobile buildings, and that's what you're gonna see, everywhere. You know, and I'm not saying that it's just gonna be like the plague, or anything like that. The concern that I have is that you're just gonna have, you know, we, we've gotten away from spot zoning, and I think you're just gonna see spot commercially, you know, for lack of a better term, you're just gonna have, anywhere that a building gets torn down, you're gonna have a bunch of vendors come in, and then they're, they're forever. I mean, you know, until they decide to go to a brick and mortar, and I know that's the business model, I know that's the plan, nobody wants to work out the small mobile building for ever. But, the way that this is currently written, I don't see where we ever say, okay, you're, you've been here five years, we have to try to start doing, we have to take this in a direction. And I, and I mentioned that before, is that after, you know, say, three or four years, it, then it becomes a sliding scale the opposite way, then you're only permitted, you know, nine months, then you're only permitted, you know, six months, three months, and then, you know, before they actually have to do, have to actually pick up their business and move it somewhere else, because you've been there for so long, you know, what's, what's, what's the plan? That's, that's kind of the, the issue that I have. Food trucks, the yacht clubs, great, I mean, I absolutely have no problem. But the only thing that concerns me is that you just have people that get kind of rooted in these places for, in unlimited amount of time. And that, to me, I think it discourages the, the brick and mortar from coming in, maybe in a vacant lot across the street, because they know they're gonna come into, well, I've got five food trucks over there, and I'm just a little, you know, I'm just trying to get my stuff going right here. And they know that they're already competing with, and then, at that point, it could be a revolving, you know, competition. They, so, that's what I mean, is that I, I have no problem with the concept, I, I think it's a great idea, I think it gives people excellent opportunity to come into a market to, to learn how to run a business, I think that's vitally important to any community. But that, that is the biggest, the biggest concern that I have.
May I address that?
Certainly.
Concern, Mr. Chair? We actually wrestled with that same concern between our planning staff and myself, and Alderman Petty. And initially, when we started down this road, we were thinking about an approval process, what we had envisioned was an approval process that would permit a particular site, or permit the property owner to open a mobile vendor pod. But what we feared would happen would be that it would be, you all, planning commission, would have one, only one opportunity, when that particular site was permitted indefinitely, to, to say, these are the improvements you've gotta make, you've gotta do, you know, sidewalks, landscape, bathrooms, whatever, you had one shot to do it. That was your only opportunity. And so, well, and we decided that, well, how would we decide how much, or how would we give you all guidance in terms of how much to require in that one shot that you got? And what was fair, you know, if, if, if this was gonna be a mobile vendor pod for just two years, well, then it wouldn't be, you know, it didn't seem fair to require a huge number of improvements. But if it was gonna be a mobile vendor pod for ten years, well, then maybe it would be more fair. And so what we, what we came back to was what we presented in front of you tonight, which is that these, these mobile vendors have to come back before you every year, and then you have an opportunity to ask for additional requirements every year. So if this does turn into a semi-permanent business model for that particular location, then incrementally, over time, you get those types of improvements, and this location begins to then have to compete with a more permanent brick and mortar business.
The only issue that I have with that is that, you know, say, say if a mobile vendor is there for five to seven years. I mean, through the eventuality of things, you're basically gonna be telling them, build a building there. I mean, in my mind, if you have somebody that's there for four and five years, they need to have a plan, outside of, I'm mobile, so I don't have to do all the other things. You know, I understand modifying the site plan, or, or, you know, contributing to the growth of that site, I understand that. But there's, that, that's what I'm saying, is that there just needs to be a point to where it's not so much you're kicking them out, but in, rather than having, you know, the majority of us aren't gonna be here in one, two, three years, whatever, you know, it will, will cycle in, cycle out. And that's what I mean, is that it, I think it would be a better tool, and a better incentive to say, you have a max permitting time of, say, four years, then after that, or say, three years, then after that, you incrementally go down from one full year, you go nine months, then you go six months, and you go three months, and then you need to, you need to give some planning, you need to do something different. And that's, I think that would be fair, you know, in my mind, and believe me, I don't make the rules. So, with that, you know, I'm, I'm gonna have to listen to other comments to, to really give you any kind of direction that I'm going with this. I, I do struggle with this, because I, I think it's great that, that people are willing to, you know, invest effort and time, and, you know, just sweat, blood and tears, you know, into these things. I think it's great. With that, I'll let it go. Commissioner Ockley.
I understand what you're saying, as already been stated by Commissioner Hoskins and Commissioner Chester, the brick and mortar has distinct advantages over a mobile vendor, heat, air, they can re, completely remodel the interior of their business, they can do other things to enhance, change menus, whatever. Mobile vendors, you know, they're seasonal, they're restricted by the number of people that can, maybe accept or be served at one particular time. I wouldn't ask the lady in back to volunteer how much time and effort and the capital fund she's already raised for business to be here in Fayetteville, Arkansas. So, the timeframe, if, if these mobile vendors can last for five years versus brick and mortar stores, hey, more power to them. I'd say hats off, you've done an heck of a job. So, I, I don't think I've seen any brick and mortar businesses go out of business, I haven't seen any of the flower shops that's gone out of business. I do know for a fact that there is a distinction between, for that one example, pigments offering versus the standard floral arrangements, so, but that's an old, old story, so we won't go back there. But if they can last ten years, or if they're out in six months, hey, that's, that's how business operates. Again, one more reading for it.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I move that we forward administrative item thirteen dash four four eight six to the city council with the recommendation of approval with the following changes. Adding the following to the portion which regards mobile vendors. The mobile vendor shall not match or duplicate the primary food or beverage offerings sold by a permanent business located upon property immediately adjacent to and on the same side of the street of the proposed mobile vendor location unless the original permit held by the mobile vendor predates the establishment of the aforementioned permanent business. Further striking the similar section about food struck, food trucks, and replacing it with the same language as I gave above, except substituting food truck for mobile vendor in the two places in which it appears.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Chester and a second from Commissioner...
Pennington.
Pennington? Okay, I apologize, Mr. Garner, please call the role.
I've been taking minutes, so I am not really here tonight to give the...
Chester?
Yes.
Pennington?
Yes.
Montal?
Nope.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Punch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Ockley?
Yes.
Hoskins?
No.
We do have an announcement, our so does in committee meeting scheduled for this Thursday, actually, yeah, we do not have any items.
What?
I would like to get Commissioner Chester's notes on that motion, if I can. Do you have any notes?
Yes. Okay, any other announcements, comments? Okay, we are adjourned.